Welcome to the July 7th, 2020 Board of Supervisors meeting for Lake County. Apologize for the technical difficulties we had here, but our IT team has done a good job to get us started. So we're going to go ahead and open our meeting at... All right. Thank you very much, IT, Sam, everybody who's working on that, constituents, everyone who's interested in the Board of Supervisors meeting today or attending. Thank you for your patience while we work through our technical difficulties. And we're going to go ahead and move forward with our next agenda item. And our next agenda item is number four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. I do not see any. And Carol, just like to confirm that.
That's correct.
Excellent. Okay, moving right along, we're going to go to the approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are usually non-controversial and can be used by motion. And I do know there was a request to pull an item from one of our directors. And I see Todd here today. Go ahead, Todd.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and other members of the board. My name is Todd Metcalf. I'm the Director of Behavior Health Services. This item that I would like to pull today is one that was in progress before COVID-19. And although my department still has the funds to cover this request, after much consideration, I've decided to pull this item and take an even more fiscally prudent approach in these matters moving forward. So I'm requesting that this item be pulled.
Okay. And you're not looking for another date? You're just pulling it off the agenda? Okay.
I remove it entirely.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you very much. So there's been a request to remove item 5.2. Are there any other items that need to be removed from the agenda from the board? All right, seeing none. Jake, we'll go ahead and also ask anyone in the room if there are any items that need to be pulled from the public.
Mr. Chair, I'm really sorry to interrupt you, but I'm getting feedback that we still have no sound on Granicus. Is that correct, team? Jake, Sam?
Checking it right here. Yeah, I'm seeing Moke talk, but nothing. In to kind of bypass more delays, I am recording the Zoom meeting, and we can upload that to Granicus after the fact. So if you want to continue that route, we can do so.
Okay. And so I know our PIO Matthew Rothstein is listening. Matthew, can you please put an alert out on Facebook immediately that we're having difficulties with sound on Granicus? The meeting remind people to join us in Zoom and tell them that the video will be uploaded to Granicus later. Okay, so we have a number of additional people coming in as well now, Mr. Chair. So let's proceed.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move forward. Jake, once again, I know I asked you to open the room. If there are any items that need to be removed from the public, from the consent agenda, please let us know now.
All right. So I don't have the dialing out there for people to raise their hands, but I will unmute the floor here and see if there is anyone interested in speaking. All right, the floor is unmuted. If you'd like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, hearing none. Go ahead and close the room back up, and we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda 5.1, 5.3 through 5.11.
Second.
Been a motion in a second. Johanna, can you do the roll call, please?
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
And Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, board. And once again, public, thank you very much for anyone on our meeting today. You know, we are having some difficult difficulties. I think, you know, we'll work through those. And please pay attention to any notifications that may be coming out to you on how to join the meeting. We're encouraging everybody to join Zoom at this point. So if you're not, go ahead and call in or get on the computer where you can go to Zoom. Thank you very much for your understanding. Todd, thank you very much for your input on that item.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along to our 6.1 item, our 9:01 a.m. item, a public... Our 9:01 a.m. item, public input. And I will go ahead and open it up, open the room up, public input for... Do we have any public input this morning, Carol? Has anybody turned anything in besides what we have from Mr. Raffinelli?
That's all we received by email.
And that's directly to item 6.1. So we will take that up when we take that... Or actually, that was referencing item 6.3.
Yeah.
So we'll take that up during that time. Is there any other public input? So that was a no. I apologize. Okay. So seeing no public input, we'll go ahead and... No written public input. We'll go ahead and open up the room. Is there any public input on any items that are not appearing on the agenda? Jake, can you open the room?
Yes. All right, the floor is unmuted. If you'd like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, go ahead and bring it back to the board.
All right.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move to our 9:02 a.m. item, consideration of an update on COVID-19. Welcome, Dr. Pace. And we'll go ahead and move to you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to give another update on the coronavirus. We are now... I'll try to make this quick because I know we're running late, and you have some other things on the agenda that are important today. So today, we have a total of 96 cases, 18 which are active. And unfortunately, we had one person pass away last week, the first death in Lake County related to COVID. We now have a total of four people in the hospital. Three of those are in the local hospital. One has been transferred out of the area to a higher level of care. So three of the hospital beds in the county are COVID-related. None of those people are on ventilators at this point. The... We had a cluster of cases in the farmworker community that seems to be not spreading real rapidly at this point. Most of those people have started coming off of isolation and are not contagious now. There are... We're still investigating some of the cluster and checking out some people, but this seems to be subsiding some. There are multiple other cases in the community. Some of those, we've been able to trace back to known cases from out of the county or from other areas, but we've not been able to do that to all of them. And there's been some kind of concerning situations where there's been a couple of healthcare workers that have tested positive or people in, you know, businesses out in the community that have contact with the public. So these, of course, are concerning. And we try to do the best we can to encourage all those workers to be wearing masks and to be doing proper distancing techniques. But, you know, that's not always possible for folks that are in the essential worker category. So the demographic information is up. It got updated again yesterday. So if people want to see, kind of explore the data a little bit, that's up on the website. We will keep updating that every week. And also related to that is the variance data. So there are metrics that the state is looking at, and that is now also up on the website. It's in a different place from the demographic data and the numbers. But it is on the public health website and is available. That will also be updated weekly. So, you know, the situation regionally and statewide is not good. The number of cases is going up quite a bit. In California, overall, there are now 6,400 people that have died from the COVID. There were 84 new deaths yesterday in the state of California. And, you know, we're just seeing a marked increase around the state. Sonoma County is seeing quite a bit of activity. They had over 100 new cases over the weekend, and I think they had the 12th person pass away. And they're definitely seeing a significant upsurge, as is Napa and Mendocino County is in a pretty similar situation as we are. So, you know, there's a lot of interest in how to try to divert this, how to try to redirect it and get back to where we were before with a lower incidence. The counties that are having the most trouble around the state, and there's 22 of them now that have been, that have put on the watch list, and they are being... They need to put more restrictions back on. So they're having to start adding restrictions back on, which are closing down bars, limiting, stopping indoor dining at restaurants, closing down wine tasting, closing down brew pubs, and also limiting indoor worship services. It seems like what we're seeing on the data is that a lot of these cases seem to be being spread with indoor activities, large groups, people coming from other areas. That's what the suspicion is. That's what we're seeing a little bit in our data, although we don't have a whole lot to work with. But statewide, nationwide, that seems to be where most of the concern is, is these gatherings indoors where people are having trouble separating, and they're not wearing masks as well. And so the focus is to try to limit these things now. And unfortunately, when we do limit it, there's still a lag time of whatever, two to four weeks before we see the significant improvement from that. So, yeah, so we'll go on to... I mean, I guess the other part, just to say quickly around that, is our focus now in the county is pretty much the same. We're trying to identify cases quickly and do the contact tracing and isolate folks so that they don't spread it to the well people. We're also trying to do these community-wide measures of getting the testing as available as possible out there and having people wear masks and do the social distancing as best they can. We... And we're also doing what we can to protect the vulnerable communities from getting outbreaks in the community or getting the people that are the most vulnerable to the severe complications from getting sick at all. And then working with the hospitals about being ready for what comes next. So that's kind of the overall view. That hasn't really changed that much yet, but we shift the focus a little bit depending on what we're seeing. The testing sites now are statewide and locally. They're getting pretty swamped. We have a three or four day backlog for people to be able to get appointments at our Verily test site. And then once the sample is sent to the lab, the labs are somewhere between four to seven days before we can get the results back. So it's a problem. It's a problem statewide. And, you know, the state is, seems to be trying to work on it, but I don't know that there's a whole lot of control we have over that. We did lose access now to the Sonoma County Public Health Lab. I think what's happening there is their local needs are such that they're getting overwhelmed. So they're just trying to cut back and focus on their own county. So we're trying to work with the state lab. Unfortunately, the state lab is only using, is only working for specific circumstances of big outbreaks in nursing homes and other places. And so we're having to redirect now down to UCSF. So there's just these ongoing issues as the outbreak, as the pandemic continues to spread and as things are increasing in the state, the resources that had been set up are starting to get stretched thin. But we are still managing in the county reasonably well. In terms of the housing situation with the homeless folks, that because of the board working with that, we've been able to extend that now through the month of July. And then we'll see where things go after that. We have RFP out, trying to get a nonprofit organization to help manage that. And so we're still working with that. Contact tracing, our staff is working hard to try to continue to do the contact tracing. We've been able to keep up, but it's stretching us pretty thin. We are in the process of accessing the state system, but they've been having some problems at the state level. And we're... So we're still working that out. Hopefully, by next week, we'll have positive news. Supposedly, we're supposed to have five people that we're going to start today through the state system. So they'll probably require some training. So we'll see how that goes. The one thing to say about the contact tracing is when we do find that somebody's been an essential worker at some business where they have contact with the public, partly what we're trying to do is talk with the business about letting the public know that there was a period of time where they may have had contact with an employee. Usually the way, the way the science is showing is usually people need to be in close contact within six feet for 20 minutes or so before there's significant concern about transmission. And if people are wearing masks, the chance of transmission cuts probably by half or so. We don't know exactly how much, but it's significant. And we're definitely seeing that in our investigations. The people that are wearing masks, the contacts tend to not turn positive. The people that aren't wearing masks, often they are turning positive. So... But we are encouraging the businesses to be transparent with the public so that I think it's really a reassurance to the public if a business is admitting that there has been an employee that was, that tested positive, then people can be confident that the businesses are looking out for them and kind of taking proper precautions to keep people safe. If the public feels like the businesses aren't going to tell that, or if the public starts saying like, oh, such and such a business is had a positive case, we need to stay away from there. Actually, those are probably the places that are safer because they're being transparent and letting people know. There's, the virus is out in the community. We're going to be seeing more of these kind of situations. The essential workers, the people that are in contact with the public are going to be the ones turning positive. I think, you know, as a person that is out in the public myself, the places that are using masks and that are taking the proper precautions and that are letting people know if one of their employees turns positive, it's much, much more reassuring to go there than the places where that's not the situation. So just to talk a little bit about the reopening status and just how we're doing with all that, you know, there are these variance metrics. As I mentioned before, we are starting to post where we are at that on the state scorecard. We are not on the monitoring list at this point. We... One of the measures, which has been the number of cases in the last two weeks, we do bump above, we're kind of right at the line for that. We're trying to talk with the state team that's monitoring this list and to talk with them about just our specific situation and what we need to think about. We're trying to set up an appointment with them as soon as we can. Because, you know, things are worsening all around. We are doing pretty well in terms of the hospital space and in terms of the clinical needs. I think we're okay. Partly what we're seeing is as this outbreak in the farmworker community seems to subside, it seems that for the most part, things are looking pretty good there, then our numbers will come down to a more manageable level. There are definitely multiple other cases that are popping up, but as we're able to get in there and talk with them and try to contain it, we are hoping that we're able to kind of keep things under control. We've definitely had some concerning, people turn positive in the, you know, in some of the healthcare facilities and things like that. But so far, all those facilities have been able to get on top of it and contain it quickly. But, you know, the more these kind of little fires pop up, one of them is probably going to catch. And hopefully, we're able to get it fairly quickly. So at this point, I think we're doing pretty well, but it's, we're definitely in a much more concerning phase, and the risks are greater. The... So and we are continuing to watch what happens around the state as they are shutting down some of these other counties, as they're beginning to... Shutting down is too strong a word, but as they're beginning to add restrictions to these other counties, we'll see how the state is responding and how they go in and do that. There are places around the state where they are starting to talk again about compliance and enforcement issues. They're starting to do some fines in different places for people that don't wear masks or for businesses that don't wear masks. The governor started talking about having some strike teams that were going to the most impacted counties and have some state workers from the liquor control board or OSHA or some of these other entities to go in and talk to the businesses that were kind of in defiance of their orders. It seemed like most of the folks that were trying to do the right thing and maybe were slipping on different aspects or needed some education or guidance, that really wasn't what they were focusing on. But they did seem to be focusing on the places that were taking a more defiant stance and saying they weren't going to do any of this. And then they were going in. And there were a few citations done over the weekend. So the... So we're just kind of learning from how the state's going to do that. We're monitoring ourselves where we are, addressing everything as they come up. We're working seven days a week on all this. The Fourth of July was a big weekend this weekend. I'm pleased to say that it seems like the festivities went pretty well, and people seemed to really take heart and not push it much in Clear Lake area. And so hopefully, that bears out over the coming weeks that things didn't spread widely then. So I'm really appreciative of all the planning that was done and the participation of the community in such a good way. So that's makes me somewhat optimistic moving forward that how we're going to be able to work with some of these activities. But a lot's going to depend on how the number of cases goes over the next few weeks. The last thing I'd like to just talk about is the PSPS events and the fire evacuation events that may need to be coming in the coming months. You know, it's dry out there. We've had something like 25 to 40% of the normal precipitation. So it's definitely a concerning year for fires and for power outages. There's been a fair amount of work done with PGME to try to set up some kind of alternate power grid. So we're hoping that the power outages isn't going to be quite as extensive as it was last year. And there's some work around the... Crystal and her team and Richard and the Red Cross are working on the sheltering possibilities during COVID. But it's definitely changes the whole equation. Part of the messaging we want to give out is that if people really should have plans on what to do and if we get in some of these situations of evacuation and everything, where probably going into a large shelter with a lot of people packed inside is not a good idea this year. We can help it. We're trying to get some other sites to spread it out more. We're trying to set it up so that people can maybe work with staying outside some. And but it's also probably a good idea to have other options if you can to go out of the area or to stay with people outside. So, you know, I think there is work going on with this. There's a lot of discussion about it. We're aware that we're getting close to the season, and it's going to just have to be different this year. So I think that's it for now. Thank you very much.
Okay, Dr. Pace, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and open it up to the board. Any questions or comments right now from the board? I had a little trouble seeing the boardroom there. If someone, if you probably raising your hand would probably be the easiest way if you have any questions. But any questions from the board at this point?
I can't seem to raise my hand. I don't know if it's...
Yeah, if you just physically raise your hand, that'd probably make it easier on me.
I don't know if you would see me on the camera.
Yeah, I can see it. Yep, go ahead, Bernal.
Good, good. I'll physically raise my hand from now on.
Yeah, yeah, it makes it easier.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Pace, for the update. I agree, at least for the city of Clear Lake. It seems that a large majority of folks definitely followed the rules. And when comparing to some of the other activities that I saw in cities was where there was no organized activity, I think the organized activity was a better way to go to make sure that we were all safe in the handling of fireworks and all the other stuff as well. So I think it went well. And I really appreciate Public Health working with us and Alliance Club in the city of Clear Lake to make that possible. As far as the loss of the lab, I kind of got it as that was implied. There's no issues with our state variance requirement for testing because of the loss of lab, because you kind of moved on to UCSF to kind of make up for whatever we lost from Sonoma County? Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, that was, that was, we used that lab mainly for quick turnaround. So when we had something that we wanted done in 24 hours or so, we were using that lab. So the numbers weren't that high, but it was actually really useful for certain circumstances that unfortunately we don't have now.
And thank you for that. And is there a conversation from the state? And I know that we're struggling right now with the quick turnaround. But I noticed over the weekend, as our numbers grew in the positive cases, our numbers shrank in the number of active cases. So that tells me that that time lag between the testing and the result and then somehow also getting a new result that they were negative, it worries me that testing has a very limited amount of data for us to be able to really tell what's going on. And it's also just a slice in time of what's happening today. We don't know what happens tomorrow and the next day and so on. Is there talk about getting the faster testing? I know there is faster testing. I know it's more expensive. I know there's been talks just at the TSA levels that you have to go in now earlier, and they're going to anticipate that you get tested and those machines will take 15 minutes. Is there talk about getting that a little bit more accessible to a larger audience, like people in Lake County?
Well, there's a bunch of things in your statement there. So the first thing is, is the fact, what you're talking about with the active cases decreasing as the number of positives were increasing, that's actually a good sign. What that means is that was a bubble, you know, or like a peak in the curve from the big stand-up testing site that we did with the outbreak in the farmworker community. So there was a big surge of cases there that have now resolved, and we're not seeing a subsequent spread that is concerning. So that's actually a good thing, what you saw there with the active cases sort of declining, even though we're having the number of positives increase. So that means that right now, we think that the number of people that are on isolation, that are actively contagious is really only 18, whereas last week at this time, or sort of at the end of last week, we had probably 40 or something like that. So... But the other question you're asking is about rapid turnaround of the testing. I mean, you know, clearly, we as a scientific community in this country are failing at providing the testing that's needed to contain this thing. And, you know, there's only so much we can do at the local level. It's, you know, all we can do is try to provide access and get the ability to get through the labs. The problem is, is because of the way this is being done, we're now in competition with Sonoma County and Napa County to get the labs done. And, you know, that's kind of ridiculous to have it be that way. We're all in this together, and we're trying to do it. But if we're all scrambling to get access to a lab, you know, it's just a problem. The question about the rapid turnaround machines is a great one. And I think that's ultimately where this is going to go. There's a couple different levels of that. One is, is there's a, I think there's a saliva test that they're working out that people can have at home that isn't as accurate as the swabs, but it gives you, you can do it daily. It's cheap, and you can do it on a daily level and see what's going on. So that's probably where this is all going. How quickly that's going to get, we don't know. But that would be great to have the kind of thing you're talking about at TSA or in the schools or something to test everybody when they come in each day. And if they turn positive, then you have to go do something else. These machines are very expensive. There's a severe limitation of reagents for them. There's these cartridges that are... And so they're actually very, hard to get. The two places in the county that I'm aware of that have it, one is Adventist and the other is... the other is Tribal Health, have to use them only for specific cases. So um, there's not really discussion that I've heard of, of like getting a machine like this to Lake County. We, we, I don't, financially and, and just supply chain wise, I, it doesn't seem like that's uh, very possible.
Okay. Well, hopefully that conversation will be coming up, cause to me, um, the testing is inadequate to help us uh, make the wise decisions of what exactly needs to be done today. We're making the best decisions we can make based on the data we have, but I still think we're, we're working with very limited data at this moment in time. Uh, and I appreciate the hard work that uh, Public Health is doing to uh, do their best with that data. Uh, my other question, I, I had a question last week about um, positivity rates. Do you know what our positivity rate is this uh, uh, this week?
Right. We've been calculating that. Actually, let me see.
I believe the state does a 14-day
I appreciate you asking that. I can send this to you too. We have a graph on it and Ask me another question and I'll find it while we're talking.
Well, I'll just make a quick comment. I know, I, I hear a lot of people who um, I, we're, we're trying our best to make sure everybody masks up, everybody uh, does their social distancing. And uh, unfortunately, some people are very unhappy when it's not a hundred percent. And I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't think it's ever going to be a hundred percent. Uh, we're, we're, we can do our best and I think that's as far as we can do. Uh, but a lot of people are choosing to go to other counties to go shopping because they don't feel that it's safe here. And I wanna say, look at the positivity rates of our surrounding counties. Almost all of our surrounding counties are on that watch list for the state of California and we're not. The safest place you can be is remain here, find the place that you feel the safest at and go shopping there. Do not leave to go out of county just to go shopping for supplies you could find right here. Cause I'm seeing a lot of that and I think that the logic is not quite um, reasonable in my opinion. So that's the comment I wanted to make. And other than the answer I'm waiting for from Dr. Pace, I'm done and thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Spatia. Okay, while Dr. Pace is looking for that, uh, do we have any comments from other board members? Okay, seeing no hands up or uh, comments. Go ahead and um, you know, Dr. Pace, obviously um, you know, uh, thank you very much for all the reports. Obviously, it's a very uh, quick-moving um, situation and uh, just wanna thank you and uh, all of our health teams, our writers, everybody, uh, Supervisor Spatia, all of our volunteers uh, for doing what we need to do. I know the testing is ramping up. You guys are doing a good job of handling that at this point. Uh, and so I just wanna say thank you for everyone. Uh, I do wanna say thank you to all of our um, the board members and other things. Uh, our community is sending in um, you know, uh, the complaints that we get. We're going out and talking to business owners. I do wanna say that uh, a majority of the business owners, when the complaints do come in, are trying to do the right things. They're doing the best of their ability. Uh, we still do have a few that are um, you know, kind of bucking up against the system here, but uh, I think the messaging always can be, you know, I think the best thing we can do is the masking. Uh, please mask, uh, you know, like I've said from the beginning, uh, the masking issue is going to be, I think, uh, one of the keys that helps us stay open longer. Um, and I just wanna thank all the businesses uh, that I've attended or met with uh, that are trying to do their best and uh, we just continue down this tough road. So uh, thank you, Dr. Pace, for all the updates and uh, thank you for our business owners who are um, trying to do what they can. And we understand these uh, tough times um, right now. If you don't have security, uh, you can only do so much. So thank you very much and I've witnessed a lot of it, uh, doing the right things. And we'll continue to educate the ones uh, that need to be talked to just a few more times, uh, but ultimately remembering we're all in this together like Dr. Pace said, uh, attempting to just keep our community open and as safe as possible. I think, and that's pretty much my comments for today. Uh, seeing any more comments, uh, I'll ask one more time if any board members have any comments for Dr. Pace. If not, we're gonna go ahead and open it up to the public. Okay, seeing no hands up or uh, anything else. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and open it up to the public, uh, for public input. And right off the bat, I see I have a hand up on the screen here. So Jake, if it's okay, I'm gonna start with um, Terry Logston, I think is uh, who has her hand up.
All right.
Do you need to unmute her, Jake, or? Hello?
Sorry, trying to adjust here.
Okay.
Can I, uh, maybe I can jump in? I did find the data.
Go ahead, Dr. Pace.
Positivity rate. So um, basically the state uses a, a cutoff of eight percent as if you're above eight percent positivity, that's concerning. If you're below eight percent, that's reasonable in their state. Part of what we're looking at is the, the reason we're interested in positivity rate is, the question is, is are we getting more cases because we're testing more or are we getting more cases because there's more people in the community that are getting infected? Because if you're testing more and you're getting more cases, the positivity rate will decline. If you're not testing enough and there's a, an increase in the cases, you're gonna see a rise in the positivity rate. So, and eight percent is where, above that is considered somewhat concerning. And in some of the places, you know, around the country where they're getting a lot of infections, their, their positivity rates in the 20% range are higher. We um, in Lake County, the one that the state is putting on the variance uh, chart on their metrics, we're at 3.4%. We have seen a little bit of a rise and in one of our internal calculations, we were getting something about six percent. But that was particularly related to the outbreak that we were seeing where we saw, you know, a high, a bunch of cases. We, we basically went out to test in an area where we thought there would, might be a bunch of cases and uh, we were right. So, but the good news is, is we found them early before people were getting sick and then we were able to contain them. So we're, we're well below the eight percent range. We are monitoring that. The state's monitoring it. And I think what we're gonna see is a, a drop-off back down now after this outbreak passes, as long as we're not seeing other clusters or other outbreaks popping up as well, so.
Okay, Dr. Pace, thank you very much. Jake, are we, are we able to um?
Can I comment on that real quick or, or ask a follow-up?
Yeah, go ahead, Supervisor Spatia.
Thank you very much. Uh, Dr. Pace, is that based on 14 days? Is that the way the state sets it up?
I think the positivity rate is on seven days. Let me see. Yeah, it's a seven-day positivity rate, but there's a lag time. So you know, they use it, they do it basically seven days that end on the um, I, I think they do it on a daily basis. So it's from seven days previously, so today is the, so it'd be ending the 30th of June, the seven days prior.
So we should be, in, in my opinion, seeing almost a rise because of those cases that went up and then a dip, like you were saying, because the cases went down. So there might be a um, a moment where we do pass the eight and then we come right back down. Uh, just cause I know that, uh, looking at my last seven days, that's when we got all the new cases, um, and the testing was pretty regular as well. Um, so anyways, uh, it's good to know that on your numbers and the state numbers that we're looking that good. Uh, unfortunately, the counties around us are struggling, uh, and it'd be nice to see our numbers drop back down and I hope that you're correct that that's what's going to occur. So thank you very much for uh, that information.
Okay. Um, I, I did have a request. If you'd seen Supervisor Crandall, uh, needed to take a break there. Um, could, could, before we open it up, uh, Jake, I'm gonna go ahead and uh, take a uh, a two-minute break here and let Supervisor Crandall get back. Um, so we're to take a break real quick. Let's make it a, you know, about a, about a three-minute break. Um, so we'll come back right at uh, 10 o'clock. Or uh, actually, I apologize. Let's go um, a five-minute break, 10:08, we'll come right back and then we'll open it up to the public. We're gonna go ahead and move to our next, our next item, which is our uh, board agenda item. I know we're running behind you. I wanna thank you for everyone's patience. Um, item 6.3, our 9:30 AM item. And that is to consider and approve the Gwinoc Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project. AM 18-04, DA 18-01, uh, GPAP 18-01, Rezone 18-01 and RZ 20-01, uh, GPD 18-01, SD 18-01, SD 201, Use Permit 1849 and Use Permit 2002. All right? Um, and on the, on the phone here, I see um, Director Scott DeLeon. Uh, so we'll go ahead and uh, turn it over to you, Scott.
Good morning, Board. Uh, Scott DeLeon, interim director for Community Development Department and it's uh, my sincere pleasure to introduce this item this morning. Um, what I'm gonna do is a, a short PowerPoint presentation and then we're gonna turn uh, the presentation over to the consultant that prepared the EIR. And then finally, the uh, applicant will be making a presentation. Uh, and so uh, I'm going to uh, attempt to share my screen. There we go. So once again, good morning, Board and interested members of the public. Uh, again, my name is Scott DeLeon, interim director. Uh, we are uh, spread all over the place. As you can tell, I'm in my office. Uh, I have uh, some staff and uh, a representative of the consultant that prepared the EIR uh, downstairs in Conference Room B. And we have uh, the applicant representatives uh, and others uh, also on this, uh, on this call or on this meeting. Uh, this morning, I'm gonna be making a presentation about uh, the, the work that we've done so far with respect to uh, taking it to the Planning Commission and go over a couple of details and a couple of things that, that occurred at the Planning Commission. And then I'll be turning it over to uh, the consultant to, who did the EIR. This morning, uh, our agenda again is a little presentation about the Planning Commission discussion. Uh, then you'll receive uh, your report from uh, Analytical Environmental Services. Uh, and, and then applicant uh, will be uh, making a presentation and then we're going to suggest you entertain a public input. We have a little change in today's agenda. Um, uh, as you were probably aware, we received uh, two significantly lengthy letters uh, yesterday and um, and uh, the consultant has asked for some additional time or will be requesting for some additional time to uh, prepare a response to both of those, uh, both of those letters. And uh, I'm sure we'll get into that a little bit later in the presentation. Uh, but uh, just so your board is aware, we will be uh, asking uh, for this hearing to be continued uh, to a date uh, later in the month. Uh, so with that, I'll go ahead and get started. Again, a quick review of what uh, what the project is and what we did at the Planning Commission. Uh, you will see this site again in uh, in future presentations and I just included it just to kinda set the stage. Uh, the red outline is the area for the Gwinoc Valley project. Uh, the Middletown Housing Site is shown uh, over here in town and then there will be some discussion about the optional off-site water well site, which is located at the intersection of Highway 29 and Bus Canyon Road. And again, you'll see this slide later in uh, other presentations. Uh, some, some things that uh, were brought up during the Planning Commission meeting. Uh, you'll note that we had two Planning Commission meetings, one on June 18th and another one on June 25th. Uh, some of the issues that were raised were uh, the timeframe for the uh, final EIR public comment, uh, consistency of the Gwinoc Valley Mixed Use Project with the Lake County General Plan, responses and issues raised uh, by Caltrans. And uh, there was a request for a summary of the changes that were made to the draft EIR. Uh, and I'm sure uh, Ryan with um, AES will be uh, including or prepared to talk to you about uh, any issues with Caltrans or the summary of the changes between the draft EIR and the final. Uh, for the final impact report, public comments, uh, there was some concern about the timeframe. Uh, the, the official public comment period for the draft EIR started in February. Uh, it was extended two weeks uh, due to the COVID-19 and, and issues with uh, making sure that the public had an opportunity to review it. So the total uh, draft EIR comment period was 60 days. Uh, the, the um, the, the final EIR uh, was published on June 12th and there were minimal changes made between the draft and the final. Uh, there were also additional opportunities to comment on the final EIR uh, at the June 18th Planning Commission meeting. And uh, though it wasn't required, uh, the Planning Commission reopened the public input uh, period uh, on the June 25th meeting. So uh, there was ample opportunity to provide comment. One of the issues raised at the 11th hour at uh, for uh, the Planning Commission was the consistency with Lake County General Plan and uh, a land use uh, goal, uh, Policy 6.12. And I'm gonna go over that just briefly. Uh, you may hear additional uh, uh, commentary about that. Uh, there were some concerns raised that this project was not consistent with the Lake County General Plan and specifically uh, LU 6.12, which uh, was a modification made in 2011 uh, by our board in response to some litigation uh, that the Sierra Club brought against the Crystal Lago Project. This revision uh, limited the number of residential units in a mixed-use resort residential project to equal, but not exceeding the number of resort units. Uh, what I needed, what I wanna point out to you is the Middletown Area Plan, which included a special study of the Gwinoc Valley, was adopted in 2010 and prior to uh, this modification that was done in 2011 as a result of the Sierra Club's uh, legal challenge to the Crystal Lago Project. Uh, currently, the Middletown Area Plan and specifically the special study for Gwinoc Valley doesn't specify a ratio of residential to resort units, but it does conclude the property could support up to 800 residential dwelling units. Uh, the project uh, was evaluating using the goals and objectives of the Middletown Area Plan and, and its special study of the Gwinoc Valley, which concluded that uh, this valley was uh, perfect for a mixed-use residential resort uh, development. And of note, this particular uh, phase of this project includes 436 residential dwelling units and 338 resort units. What we proposed, because of the, the, the conflict that was raised by uh, the Sierra Club, what we proposed was a modification to the general plan, uh, so that uh, the, the condition that was added LU 6.12 uh, would not apply to the special study zone of the Middletown Area Plan for the Gwinoc Valley. Uh, it's our opinion that the Middletown Area Plan should be the controlling document. Uh, it preceded the uh, modification to the general plan. And, and so the language that was added at the Planning Commission uh, brings the Middletown Area Plan and the general plan uh, into uh, consistency and this project is now consistent with both. When the time comes, uh, there are a number of county approvals, uh, as indicated uh, by the number of general plan amendments and different uh, uh, initials and things that were read uh, at the intro to this. Uh, the first thing that you're gonna be doing uh, is the uh, approval of the Gwinoc Valley Mixed Use Commercial Development. There are a number of, of different approvals that you're going to be doing, zoning ordinance, uh, certifying the final EIR, general plan amendment, and then of course, uh, use permits and specific plans of developments, subdivision maps and a, and a development agreement. Uh, for the Middletown Housing Site, you'll be doing a rezone, uh, a tentative subdivision, subdivision map, excuse me, and a major use permit. And then finally, that general plan amendment for uh, the Gwinoc uh, area. With that, uh, I'll be turning this presentation With that, I'll be turning this presentation over to Ryan Sawyer with Analytical Environmental Services. And I and my staff will be available to answer any questions that you might have. And with that, I will stop sharing my screen, and I'll turn it over to Ryan. So thank you very much, Board.
Thank you, Director DeLeon. Thank you. There you go, Ryan. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Good morning, care, members of the Board and the public. I'm Ryan Sawyer with Analytical Environmental Services. We are the environmental consultant that was hired to prepare the environmental impact report for the Guanac Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project. I'm going to attempt to share my screen here. Right, my presentation should be up and running now.
Yes, we can see it.
Wonderful. And now, I'm going to attempt to move forward. There we go. All right, so the following presentation will detail the purpose of an environmental impact report, provide an overview of the Guanac Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project, provide a summary of the analysis and the key findings from the EIR, and summarize our conclusions. To start off with a bit of background, the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, requires public agencies to consider the environmental effects of discretionary actions prior to making a decision. The environmental impact report prepared for the proposed project is an informational document intended to inform decision-makers of environmental issues before making a project decision. It also identifies potentially significant direct, indirect, and cumulative project-related impacts, and describes mitigation measures that will lessen those impacts. The SEQA environmental review process for the proposed project was initiated with release of the Notice of Preparation on April 23rd of 2019. The NOP described the project and identified the anticipated scope of analysis for the EIR. Comments responding to the NOP were considered during preparation of the EIR. The draft EIR was then released for public and agency review and comment with issuance of a notice of availability on February 21st, announcing a 45-day comment period that was subsequently extended for an additional two weeks in response to the COVID outbreak. The total comment period for the draft EIR was subsequently 60 days, and it ended on April 21st. We received 29 written comment letters plus six verbal comments that were provided at the draft EIR Planning Commission meeting. Comments in the draft EIR were addressed in the final EIR, which was published on the county's website on June 12th, as indicated. And the final EIR consists of responses to each of the comments received during the review period, a revised version of the draft EIR, and technical appendices. So it's divided between those three volumes shown here on this slide. In brief, the project will require approvals from Lake County and other responsible agencies that will allow the development of a mixed-use resort and residential community on the Guanac Valley site, offsite workforce housing in Middletown, and an optional offsite water supply well and pipeline extending from State Route 29 to the Guanac Valley site. These three project location studies in the EIR are shown on this slide. The Guanac Valley site consists of approximately 16,000 acres, or 25 square miles, in southeast Lake County. It's located along Bus Canyon Road directly west of the Napa County line. The Middletown Housing Site, which is the location of proposed offsite workforce housing, consists of approximately 12.75 acres in central Middletown. And the offsite well site consists of approximately 37 acres just east of Middletown and a pipeline alignment that would extend for approximately six miles along Bus Canyon to the project site. I do want to point out, I believe the county received some questions recently as to what were the proposed uses for the offsite well site. And they had a question as to whether or not housing was proposed there. And I just do want to clarify, there's no housing proposed at the offsite well site, only that potential infrastructure being the well and pipeline. This slide illustrates the location of the Guanac Valley site, the Middletown Housing Site, and the well site. The crosshatch area shown here within the central portion of the Guanac Valley site is under separate ownership and not a part of the project. The key requested county approvals are listed here and include an amendment to the general plan land use designation from agriculture, resource conservation, rural lands, and rural residential to resort commercial. So the entire Guanac Valley site is proposed to be designated as resort commercial. A zoning ordinance amendment to introduce a new zoning district referred to as the Guanac Valley District that would allow for future uses of the site generally consistent with the goals of the Middletown Area Plan. Approvals also include entitlements for Phase 1 of the Guanac Valley District, including phased tentative subdivision maps, as well as approval of entitlements for workforce housing in Middletown, including a rezoning of a portion of the site from single-family residential to two-family residential, and approval of a tentative subdivision map. This slide illustrates the proposed zoning for the Guanac Valley site. As you can see, the entire site would be designated Guanac Valley District. The project also proposes approximately 1,700 acres of agricultural combining district areas, which are shown in the black crosshatch here, and approximately 2,765 acres of open space combining districts, which is shown in the green crosshatch. The project would permit development of up to 850 hotel and resort residential units, 1,400 residential estate, 500 workforce cohousing bedrooms, resort amenities, and accessory uses. So those are the uses that will be allowed under the proposed Guanac Valley District. The Guanac Valley District will be developed over multiple phases, and at this time, detailed plans have only been developed for the first phase, which will be constructed over the next 10 years, and future phases will be built out based on market demand. Therefore, as a result of this extended timeline, the EIR provides a programmatic analysis of the impact of full buildout of the Guanac Valley District and a project-level analysis for impact of the Phase 1 development. Development of future phases would then be subject to additional SEQA analysis that would tier off the programmatic analysis in the EIR. Phase 1 of the Guanac Valley District would have a combined footprint of 1,415 acres. So this is the physical footprint of grading and ground disturbance that would consist of five hotels with a total of 127 hotel units and 141 resort residential units, 401 residential estate villas, and 100 workforce cohousing bedroom units. Additionally, Phase 1 includes resort amenities, including an amphitheater, spa, equestrian areas, a new golf course, a camping area, and commercial and retail facilities. Phase 1 also includes agricultural production and support facilities, including up to two wineries, essential accessory facilities, including backup house, 50 temporary workforce hotel units referred to as the Entourage Hotel, an emergency response and fire center, a float plane dock on Beeter's Reservoir, which is south of Bus Canyon Road, two helipads, including one south of Bus Canyon Road and one adjacent to the emergency response and fire center, and supporting infrastructure, including solar energy production areas. This slide illustrates the site plan for Phase 1. So the maroon areas here represent the resort parcels, with the residential parcels shown in blue, the golf course in dark green, and the open space combining district in the green hash. Additionally, the areas shown in the orange crosshatch here, which are sort of these linear that look like trails extending through the site, are proposed habitat connectivity easements that were added to the project to address comments received during the draft EIR review Undeveloped areas within the site will include approximately 2,765 acres of open space combining district, consistent with the requirements of the previous water rights EIR that expanded the place of use of water within the Guanac Valley site. The addition of 400 acres of habitat connectivity easements identified to generally align with wildlife movement corridors that were identified in the Maya Comas Tavarieta Network prepared by the Pepperwood Preserve. So those are the orange areas that I showed in the previous slide here. Approximately 1,700 acres of add combining district areas. Undeveloped areas within the residential lots was a result of a 1.5-acre development restriction within the Guanac Valley District zoning ordinance for residential lots. And approximately 7,600 acres of general open space that would be provided between the resort clusters that's not proposed for development under Phase 1. However, it should be noted that some of this, you know, general open space could be subject to development under future phases. As required by the proposed Guanac Valley District Design Guidelines, which are included as Appendix DG to the EIR, site-wide lighting design will preserve nighttime dark skies in accordance with the Dark Sky Initiative adopted by the county in the California Building Code. And this will be accomplished by minimizing the use of lighting fixtures and where used, ensuring that all exterior lights are shielded and downcast. Four options for electric power distribution are evaluated in the EIR, and they range from the provision of power by PG&E to the creation of a public utility district with electrical power distribution independent from PG&E, including generation plus storage of power for the project's entire energy needs. The proposed project will include the installation of solar panels to, at a minimum, meet the demand of the proposed residential units in accordance with California law, and would utilize renewable energy sources either through purchase or onsite generation to meet the demands of commercial and other uses within the site. Site access will be provided through two entrances on Bus Canyon Road. The primary access would occur via a new roadway and intersection, and we evaluated two options for this primary access road within the EIR. What we refer to as Option 1 within the EIR would be located approximately just two miles south of the existing Langtree Winery entrance. And the second option would be located at McCain Canyon closer to the Napa Valley boundary, approximately 2.6 miles from the Langtree Winery entrance. Secondary access will be provided through improvement to an existing roadway that's located between the Langtree Winery entrance and the proposed primary entrance option. Both access intersections would include turning lanes and de-acceleration acceleration lanes if needed and would include stop and yield signs. Additionally, warning signs will be installed on both sides of the intersections so that travelers are aware of the approaching intersection. Given the remote location of the site, the applicant proposes to develop an independent water and wastewater system to serve the proposed development. Sufficient onsite water and wastewater capacity for Phase 1 and future phases have been demonstrated in the water supply assessment and the wastewater feasibility report that were both included as appendices to the EIR. The new water wastewater system would either be owned and operated by a newly established private utility or would be sold to and operated by an existing utility company or district. Potable water for the project would be provided via deep water supply wells within the site, and non-potable water for irrigation and fire supply would be provided through recycled water, surface water where allowable, and optionally through the offsite water supply well. Although it should be noted that the water supply assessment did find that there were sufficient supplies within the site itself to meet the needs of the project without the use of the offsite well. Wastewater treatments for resort clusters and nearby residential development would be provided through centralized wastewater treatment plants that would produce high-quality recycled water, and independent septic systems would be used for the more remote residential Offsite improvements associated with a project may include electrical transmission line upgrades. However, these would primarily be limited to just rewiring existing poles, and therefore physical environmental effects would be minimal. The water supply well that I illustrated in the previous slide, access intersection improvements, and the offsite workforce housing in Middletown. And the environmental effects of all these offsite improvements are evaluated in the The offsite workforce housing will consist of 50 housing units, including 21 single-family and 29 duplex units, each with four bedrooms. And the offsite workforce housing will also include a community center and open space along the creek that runs to the site. This slide illustrates the site plan for the offsite workforce housing. As you can see here, the duplexes are located in the central portion of the site with a single-family unit surrounding the perimeter. Rain gardens and stormwater detention and treatment areas will be constructed to ensure no significant increase in stormwater. And I do want to point out that all excavation within the site will be balanced, cut, and filled. So although there will be some areas of the site that are built up to be above the flood plain, that will be counteracted by developing a stormwater detention basin in the central portion of the site. So there'll be no change to the flood elevations within the surrounding areas. So Volume 2 of the final EIR, which is the revised version of the draft EIR and really the heart of the environmental analysis, the outline of Volume 2 is shown here on this slide. So Section 1 includes an introduction that provides an overview and an explanation of the EIR process and the issues that were raised during scoping. Section 2, the very detailed description of the proposed project. Section 3 is the environmental analysis, so that describes the environmental baseline on the proposed project and the offsite improvement areas, the regulatory setting, and then a detailed description of the potential impacts and recommended mitigation measures to avoid impact. Section 4 addresses other SEQA considerations, including discussions of cumulative impacts, the potential for indirect and growth-inducing effects, and also summarizes the significant unavoidable effects of the project. Section 5 includes an analysis of various alternatives to the project. And then we have the bibliographic section. The resource areas addressed within Section 3, environmental consequences, are organized into the following subsections that are listed here. And the topical areas within the EIR were determined based on the results of the scoping comments that were received after release of the Notice of Preparation, as well as an initial study that was prepared. Extensive studies were conducted in support of the environmental impact analysis and were included as appendices to the draft EIR and the final EIR. These include multiple biological assessments and cultural resource surveys, traffic impact analyses, and water resource studies.
Excuse me, Ryan. I don't mean to interrupt, but I need to ask a technical question.
Sure.
I just received a text. Are we getting, are we having any video problems with Granicus or anything else? Does anyone know? I got a text saying that it was frozen.
Let me double-check.
And I don't know if that's on Granicus or anything else, so I'm just checking.
I checked on.
I'm checking right here, too.
No, looks like we're still moving along right now on Granicus. And they're sounding.
Maybe it was something with MediaCom. It says, "Was frozen on TV since Guanac Valley began." So, you know, I don't know if it's MediaCom. Sorry about that, Ryan. I just wanted to make sure we're getting all the information out there.
Absolutely.
Being that I've checked on it, go ahead and keep moving forward. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so, let's see. So on this slide here, I just want to summarize briefly the key additions to the technical analysis, the appendices that were made following release of the draft EIR. So these are the changes that were made within the final. So the oak plan that was previously included within the draft EIR was revised to increase the oak woodland preservation ratios to require three acres of preservation for every acre of impact to value of woodland, and two acres of preservation for every acre of impact to all other oak woodlands versus the 1.5 to 1 preservation ratio that was required in the draft EIR. Additional revisions to that plan included clarification that Oak Savannah is a subset of oak woodland, and the monitoring requirements for mitigation plantings were increased. So the requirement to monitor for six hundred years was increased. The wildfire response plan, which is included as Appendix Fire to the draft EIR, was revised to require the establishment of roadway fire breaks upon occupancy of the structures versus leaving the timing of the fire breaks, the discretion of the homeowners association, and also to require that primary structures are equipped with an exterior fire suppression system. An air transportation technical memo was added, so we do not have one in the draft, to clarify information related to the operations of the float plane dock and helipads within the site in response to comments that were received from Caltrans Aviation. And Appendix Wildlife, this is also a new appendix, was added to evaluate further wildlife movement corridors on the Guanac Valley site that were identified in the Maya Comas Tavarieta Connectivity Network Report. And as a result of this study, the 400 acres of habitat easements were added to the site plan that I showed previously. And finally, a transportation demand management plan was provided in accordance with the mitigation measures in the draft EIR to reduce vehicle mile traveled impact. So this plan essentially implements the mitigation or the mitigation requirements that were in the draft EIR initially. Okay, so on the following slides here, I'm just going to summarize the key issues and mitigation measures that were recommended in the EIR that we've heard from various folks that they have concerns related to. So I just wanted, full disclosure here, this is not a complete summary of all of the impacts and mitigation measures in the draft EIR, but just some of the key findings. So with respect to aesthetics, the EIR found that the majority of the proposed Phase 1 development would not be visible from public vantage points. However, the site access Option 2 at McCain Canyon Road, so the access option that's closer to Napa, would result in significant alteration of the topography in that area that would be considered significant and unavoidable under SEQA. Additionally, because the location of future development has not been identified, the future future phases of the project, we don't know exactly where those are going to occur, the EIR identified that development of those future phases would have a potentially significant unavoidable effect to viewers along Butt Canyon Road, which is a county designated scenic corridor. With the incorporation of dark sky lighting strategies in the Guanac Valley District Design Guidelines at the Guanac Valley site, the project would have a less than significant impact associated with lighting, and similar mitigation measures were recommended to be implemented at the Middletown housing site. Regarding agriculture, currently there are 1,100 acres of agricultural zoning within the Guanac Valley site, and after the proposed zoning amendment, the project would preserve approximately 1,700 acres and add preserve combining districts, which is an overall increase in agricultural zoning. The majority of the important farmland within the overall boundaries of the site is located within the Guanac Valley, which is under separate ownership and therefore not a part of the project. And within the project site itself, there are approximately 200 acres of important farmland, and only 50 acres of this will be converted as a result of Phase One, with the potential for conversion of important farmland in future phases. Mitigation requires that conservation easements are established on agricultural land of equivalent quality, however, because there will be a net loss of important farmland, this is considered a significant unavoidable impact. The project will result in emissions of criteria pollutants and greenhouse gases from construction and operation. Mitigation measures include construction best management practices, including dust control and the use of low emission Tier Four equipment, and operational measures including energy efficiency and transportation demand management strategies such as carpooling and shuttles. Because the Lake County air basin is an attainment for all criteria air pollutants, these measures would reduce impacts associated with air quality to less than significant. However, the generation of greenhouse gas emissions would exceed the thresholds associated with statewide greenhouse gas reduction targets and therefore will be considered significant and unavoidable. The Guanac Valley site supports habitat for numerous special status wildlife and plant species. The EIR requires extensive mitigation measures to protect these species from harm during construction and operational activities. The measures include, but are not limited to, construction and worker awareness training, pre-construction surveys, lighting measures, restricted construction times, and fencing near sensitive habitats, habitat preservation, restrictions on perimeter fencing to allow wildlife movement, and a detailed oak mitigation plan that I described previously. There are approximately 4,500 acres of oak woodland within the Guanac Valley site, with 477 acres being impacted by the Phase One development. The oak mitigation plan requires that residential lot development is restricted to a maximum of one acre of impact to oaks, so each individual residential lot, when it's developed, can only impact up to one acre of oaks. Valley oak woodland must be preserved at a ratio of three to one, and other oak woodlands must be preserved at a ratio of two to one. In other words, for every one acre of impact occurring, two acres must be preserved. And individual oaks that are impacted have to be replanted at either a two to one or a five to one ratio, depending upon the size of the tree. Cultural resources surveys of the site have identified over 60 known historic and archaeological resources, some of which are also tribal cultural resources. Mitigation includes avoidance of the known resources within the site and requires that the applicant retain a tribal cultural advisor, conduct construction worker awareness training, and prepare an unanticipated discovery plan. Additionally, professional archaeologists and tribal monitors must conduct construction monitoring of initial ground disturbing activities. And since the publication of the draft EIR and as a result of ongoing consultation with Middletown Rancheria regarding tribal cultural resources, the mitigation measures in the final EIR have been further refined to emphasize avoidance and minimization of the known resources and newly discovered resources, and the clarified procedures in the event of discovery of resources during construction. Groundwater pump tests and the water supply assessment technical appendix found that there are sufficient water supplies within the project site to support the proposed development without adversely impacting surface and groundwater resources. Mitigation does require that a safe field pump test of the offsite well be conducted that demonstrates no drawdown of groundwater beyond 300 feet of that well and requires quarterly groundwater monitoring for the first five years of use to demonstrate no impact to groundwater levels. Additional mitigation measures were recommended associated with stormwater pollution and floodplain mapping. Due to the distance of the site from the nearest receptors, most noise impacts were determined to be less than significant. However, the EIR did identify potentially significant impacts associated with the use of the float plane dock and the helipads, as well as the increase in traffic-related noise along Butt Canyon Road. Mitigation measures include reduction of construction noise from equipment and trucks using techniques such as mufflers, and non-emergency aircraft and helicopter flight times must be limited to daytime hours between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM, depending upon the time of the year, so as not to cause unsleep disturbance at the nearby residential receptors. After mitigation, the increase in traffic-related noise along Butt Canyon would be considered significant and unavoidable, though. And, you know, this is a, is a result of the increase in the noise level, so the existing traffic levels out there are fairly low. With the project, those would substantially increase, and so the overall noise levels will be, it'll be an audible change for the residents who's located along that roadway. The EIR traffic study identified potentially significant impacts associated with level of service impact at several intersections, including near-term impacts to locations on State Route 29, and cumulative impacts to intersections outside of Lake County jurisdiction. The traffic study also found that the generation of vehicle miles traveled per capita would be above the regional average, and therefore it recommended mitigation measures to reduce vehicle mile traveled impact. So the various mitigation measures required by the EIR include entering into agreement with Caltrans for improvements to State Route 29 intersections, including conducting some intersection improvements to SR 29 and Butt Canyon Road prior to the project moving forward, conducting a traffic study and implementing mitigation measures for future phases of the project before they move forward, and also implementing the transportation demand management program. With respect to wildfire effects, the proposed project itself incorporates a number of design features that are outlined in the wildfire prevention plan, including strategic fire breaks along roadways and drainages, fuel management and livestock grazing practices, and exterior sprinkler systems on the building structures. With the measures outlined in the wildfire prevention plan, the EIR found that the project would have less than significant impacts related to the exacerbation of wildfire hazards. However, mitigation was recommended to address post-wildfire measures that should be implemented in the event of a fire to prevent landslides and flooding. And as Scott alluded to earlier, we did just recently receive some detailed comments related to wildfire issues that we are going to be looking into and addressing between now and the next hearing related to the project. And finally, the final EIR can be viewed on the county's website at this address, and that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ryan, greatly appreciated for your presentation. I know when we talked about the timing, let me get back to, do we have one more presentation to go on this? Scott, or is this, we're going to go ahead and go right into questions?
Well, I think Kirsty from, from Maha is probably on the, on the phone or on the, on the meeting, I believe they plan to make a presentation.
Excellent, that's what I thought. So we'll go ahead and do the final presentation, and then we'll, and then we'll bring back the board and then open it up for comments. So we'll go ahead and turn it over to Kirsty.
Actually, I'm going to step up first, Chair Simon. Good morning.
Okay.
Chair and honorable members of the board, my name is Catherine Philippakis, and I'm an attorney with Relle Bron and Martel in St. Helena. I'm very pleased to be here this morning to represent this project. I have been involved with the Guanac property for about 18 years now, going back to the days of Orville McGoon, whom some of you may remember, and I'm so glad that we're able to present to you what we consider to be a truly world-class proposal. Before we get started, I would like to very sincerely express our thanks to your staff and county council's office for all their hard work and assistance during the past couple of years while we worked on this application. We always appreciate their professionalism and their collegiality in particular, which is not always the case when dealing with local agencies. We have a number of speakers who will describe different aspects of the project for you today. The first of these is Jonathan Breen. Jonathan, or JB, as we all know him as, is one of the development partners and one of the project visionaries. He has decades of experience developing luxury hotels, and he's known in the hotel industry as an innovator of very high-end resort communities. He has been business partners with Adrian Zeca for over 20 years, and together they developed a brand of luxury resorts known as Setai. Jonathan is going to speak to you about the overall concept of the project, and I'm going to turn things over to him, so thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Also, just, can I get, I'd like, I'm going to show a video after I finish, so if it's possible, just to have Rachel be able to share her screen as well?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, so, good morning, Chairman Simon and members of the board. My name is Jonathan Breen, and I'm one of the development partners for this project. On behalf of my other development partners, being Adrian Zeca, Chris Meredith, Kevin Case, and Nick Fung, we want to thank the Lake County staff and the community for the support and your time today. Adrian Zeca and I first looked at this project way back in 2012, so as you can imagine, we are very grateful to be here today with the purpose to develop a luxury international resort that provides the long-term sustainable goals of new economic, employment, and housing opportunities. In 2016, after years of searching, we were very fortunate to find a responsible owner with a commitment to long-term preservation and low-density development. Our vision has always been about preserving this beautiful land and undertaking a very low-density development that is in tune with the nature. When complete, the development square footage will use less than 10% of the total property. Once we acquired the property in 2016, we immediately began commissioning the best international architects and designers to work with us on the overall master plan, and then the vision for each of the components of the project. The planning process started with our master planner, John Michel Gathy from Denniston, and our team extensively hiking every part of the 16,000-acre property. After over a year, we had agreed on an overall master plan. The next step was bringing each of the various architects to the property and working with them on a location that appealed to them as a designer. These eventually became their respective community cluster areas. From the beginning, we utilized the Middletown area plan as our guide, and we hope you are pleased with what we came up with when we established our project objectives. I thought it might be helpful today to also mention the designers and team members who are behind this project. The designs that you will see here today are the result of a team of over 35 talented professionals, including Denniston International, who completed the master plan but is also designing the golf section with three clubhouses and various golf fillers, and is also working with Tom Doak, who is designing the actual golf course. Beckham-Gillam Architects, led by Howard Beckham, has designed the farm village, which includes a hotel, a farm-to-table restaurant, a grocery store, artisanal retail barns, a farmer's market, winery, and associated villas. FDG Architects, who consists of the Argentinian professional polo player, Nacho Figueres, and a father-and-son team of Ignacio Ramos, have designed the polo and equestrian center along with some polo pillars. Ed Toto and Kerry Hill Architects, who have both worked with Adrian Zeca for over 40 years, and have designed for Adrian some of the best resorts around the world, both are designing intimate boutique resorts with their own villas. Toto Ando from Japan has designed a wonderful museum and art complex. Versus design are handling the architecture coordination with many of these overseas architects. We have a very talented landscape team that includes Island Planning Corporation, SWA Group, and PCI Landscape Architects. And our civil engineers at Sherwood Design, who have greatly assisted the team in helping all of them with a civil design for such a large-scale project. Since all the team members could not be here today, I would like to present to you this short video. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it. Rachel, are you able to bring up the video?
I am very, very concerned about intruding into nature. I don't want to disturb it. I love nature. It's the biggest piece of land that I've ever had a chance to work with, and to find one that is so beautiful, because it is in wine country, with the lakes, with the topography that it has, that this land that is so fantastic, put into a responsible owner, that we were able to find to buy it. That is very rare and unusual.
I don't think I've ever seen anything so beautiful. The goal of the project is to create something that we don't affect the land, and at the end of the day, the beauty of the land is still the essence of the project. That has always been the mantra from, from the beginning.
And let me tell you, and I've been around the world many times, I know when I, when I see a site, it's usually doesn't, this is not something intellectual, you can't,
I started getting calls from people with environmental interests because my work seemed different than everybody else. The less it looks like a golf course, the better. This project, so much bigger and such a longer-term vision than most of the things that I've worked on, they just keep coming up with more interesting pieces like this equestrian facility.
I really believe that there's going to be a before and after in, in my life of this project, because this is a project where someone gives you a white canvas and allows you to dream, and that doesn't happen too often, and here the idea was, okay, let's bring this equestrian lifestyle to life and just dream, you know? There's no limitations to it, except taking care of the environment and not interfering with that, right? It is an honor, right, to be able to work with someone like Adrian, someone that has given people beautiful experiences, and being able to work with someone like him is, it's a dream come true, it's an honor. I just can't wait for this whole thing to, to happen.
We'll never again get to do a project like that. Buildings are buildings, but nature is fantastic. Buildings are buildings, but nature is fantastic.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Good morning Chairman Simon, members of the board, and members from the community who have joined online. My name is Kirsty Shelton. For those of whom I haven't met, I'm the Planning and Entitlement Manager for the Mahaw projects in Guanac Valley. As you can imagine, I've been working with a design team, the county and the community for over three years, as is shown by the almost 250 public support letters that were submitted to the record. And it is with excitement and my absolute pleasure to present this innovative and responsibly designed project. We're just going to catch up on the slides for a minute. Hold on one second. For those of you guys who have been on the ranch or within the vicinity or called Middletown your home, you're very well that this is a very beautiful property with a diverse landscape, with existing hills ranging from 800 to 2,000 feet above sea level. And of course, the renowned Guanac Valley. The ranch has a rich history, home to many indigenous cultures over the past thousands of years, then homesteaders, and some of you may even know the property from the Lily Land Tree Estate Winery. Over the past 200 years, the ranch has been continuously grazed, as you can see by the map of historic pastures. Please note, there's almost about 500 acres of land that was not purchased by the current owner and therefore is not part of his request, nor part of any of the land use requests current. William Dieter engineered the water system that exists today. Most of you know the Dieter Reservoir, which you drive by on Butts Canyon Road next to the White Picket Fence. But that is just one of the many water reservoirs which store most of the watershed within the ranch, seven which are jurisdictional. About 10 years ago, the ranch changed the water rights from irrigated pasture to allow for irrigation of the vineyards or agriculture. This means 10,000 acre feet of current irrigation for the vineyards and some of our projects will not be relying on groundwater. For those of you who may not be familiar with acre-feet conversion, you literally put one foot of water over one acre. So in this case, the property is 16,000 acres with one foot over more than half would be the existing approval of irrigation with no change of the project. About 3.3 billion gallons of existing water, surface water, not groundwater. The approval 10 years ago allowed for an irrigation footprint of 2,800 acres. You will see there are large areas of surface water that do not have existing or proposed vineyards on it. This slide represents the current development on the ranch. As you will see, as part of this project, the majority of the vineyards will be placed in agricultural preserve. And more exciting, the project proposes a diversity of agriculture, which we'll go into in the forthcoming slides. Now we'll start to begin diving into the project description. I want to pause here because for the most part, the following slides will focus on what we call Phase One. The specific plan of development, which is discussed earlier, includes the project-level EIR analysis. Our Phase One includes our forecast of development for about the next 10 years, which will be referred to as our project unless otherwise identified. It should be noted that the general plan of development, the rezon, future phases, or the 50-year plan, will require additional environmental review on the future. Key project components within the 16,000-acre boundary are project footprint as less than 10% of the ranch, or 1,450 acres. As just described, the ranch has previous entitlements that allows for extensive vineyard development on-site. Our project will displace approximately 400 acres of planted or previously approved vineyards. In addition, there is 2,765 acres of designated open space. This was required as part of the 2009 water right EIR modification and includes the mitigation for the 400 acres described above that our project displaces. In the forthcoming slides, you'll be introduced to the 425-acre Habitat Connectivity Easement, which is something that we have recently added in response to some of the public comments we've made in the draft EIR. Please note, these easements are in addition to the designated open space, providing a total of almost 3,200 acres in long-term preservation. In the next slides, you'll be introduced to the Oak Woodland Preservation. This has been enlarged from 1,650 to 1,965 acres since our last presentation, again, in response to some of the public comments we received. As you saw in the previous presentations and again in the forthcoming slides, we are offering two combining districts within the new Guanac Valley District. The Agricultural Preserve combining district totaling 1,700 acres, which was described by Ryan, and in addition, the open space combining district, as I just described. Finally, the majority of the site is rural landscape. We call this the area in between. And will be left as functionally preserved open space for the majority of the site. As discussed, these areas are already pre-selected for agricultural, resort, and commercial development through the special study previously approved in the Middletown Area Plan adopted 10 years ago. As you can see on this map, the majority of the ranch is within the Middletown Area Plan Special Study Number Three. The Middletown Area Plan was a public process that formalized the goals and visions of the future growth of Southern Lake County. The property owner purchased this property to invest in this visionary plan and would score it being part of the realization. The primary goals of the area plan was to focus on revitalizing the historic resort development with commercial uses as the primary use and to grow the high-quality agritourism concept as identified in the Middletown Area Plan. These renderings are what the Mahaw Farm Community Village would look like. As you can see, the vision is grounded in the agritourism concepts as identified by the area plan, and most specifically focusing on the agricultural bounty that Lake County has to offer, while introducing an experience of the art of harvesting from the land. The area plan informed our proposed zoning ordinance for the Guanac Valley District. To ensure the continued importance and reliance on the historic agricultural uses on the property and within Lake County, the emphasis on agriculture was preserved with the proposed open district. As discussed, to protect the agriculture, we created the Agricultural Preserve combining district to ensure the long-term preservation of onsite agricultural development. Most importantly, the resort concept is rooted in the local cultural heritage in combination with the farm-to-table concept. The concepts identified in the Middletown Area Plan informed our proposed zoning ordinance. This slide shows the existing zoning. Please note, the combining district remained unchanged. And in addition, please note, there are 69 legal existing parcels. As discussed, this is a slide of the proposed Guanac Valley District. One of the goals of the area plan was for it to be rezoned to a planned development district combining agriculture, commercial, and residential uses. Currently, the Lake County zoning ordinance does not have a mixed resort and residential zoning. Therefore, we are requesting to be rezoned to the Guanac Valley District, or GBB, as this provides for the unique blend of commercial, hotel, and residential uses balanced with the primary agriculture and open space. This is where our proposal diverts into two very important areas to distinguish. As already noted, any additional requests beyond our first phase will require another specific plan application and further environmental review. I'd like to point out on this slide that the two additional proposed combining districts, designated open space and agricultural overlay, as described, will include resort development. One of the primary goals of this project is to maintain the designation of a boutique hotel. This requires but a key hotel rooms or less. This is achieved by having a Keystone Boutique Hotel as the flagship of five separate primary resort communities. These resort communities, which we'll go into detail in the next slides, typically have a boutique hotel surrounded by resort residential, which are small cottages for families to rent for longer stays, resulting in a total of 288 hotel units within the project Phase One. Typically, the resort communities are surrounded by low-density residential or sale parcels, which I'll explain on the next slide. Low-density residential is another very primary goal of this project. It's easy to misconceive the development of this project because of the scale. As you can see, the development impact ratio is minor. This graphic was produced by tracing the typical rooftops and roadways. The total number of residential estates is 401. Our footprint has 0.2 units per acre, or approximately two units per 10 acres. Here is an example of a typical lot. This is example we call the pizza slice. It is six and a half acres with a development footprint of one and a half acres, which results in five acres of functionally preserved open space. For reference, this five acres of potentially preserved open space is not included in the designated open space or habitat calculation. This low-density concept within the preserved open space is a key element of the project's objective and sustainable and financial viability. Now, I'd like to introduce Courtney Bauer to discuss the architectural elements in various resort communities. Courtney is an architect and a principal of Versa Design, whose work is grounded in active social, environmental, and economic issues, while aesthetically exploring the ideas of beauty, sustainability, cultural convention, and place. Courtney Bauer?
Thank you, Kirsty. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, Courtney? We can hear you.
Yes. Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks again, Kirsty. Before I begin, I'd like to mention that Versa Design has a longstanding relationship working with Lotus Land and is very proud to represent the world-renowned designers shaping this unparalleled project. The first community that we'd like to describe today is the Equestrian and Polo Center. It is designed by Figueroz Design Group and they are based out of Argentina. This cluster is focused on the equestrian activities and is highlighted by two recreational polo fields. The main commercial area includes three buildings, a clubhouse, stables, and a pony camp. These three buildings are organized on the site by a water element and are integrated into the site with planted berms and green roofs, implying an extension of the landscape. The bermed areas at the clubhouse will act as a viewing platform for the polo field. Adjacent to the main commercial center is a small lodge surrounded by resort cottages and then peripheral villas. The Figueroz Design Group's architecture draws inspiration from the site by incorporating site materials, adapting to and paying reverence to the existing site conditions to enhance the user's accessibility and appreciation of the site. You can see that by the stone walls, soft green roofs, and long horizontal lines. The top picture on the right of this slide shows a typical residential villa, which, at the end of the presentation, we will show you a short video of the villas and their integration into the landscape. The second community that we'll go to today that I'd like to describe is Bone Ridge. And it is designed by Ed Tuttle of Design Realization, who was a Northern Californian native. Ed Tuttle's architecture includes a unique circular hotel and restaurant that is punctuated by terraced green roofs. An exterior terrace and pathway along a prominent ridge line offers a breathtaking experience. The single-level resort residential cottages flank the circular hotel and then is surrounded by low-density residential villas. Honoring the vast beauty of Bone Ridge and its panoramic views, this architectural cluster adopts the simplicity of barn architecture in shapes and volumes and the intermingling juxtaposition between indoor and outdoor living spaces. Building footprints are scaled according to the existing geological footprint, minimizing the built form in respect to the site. Low-lying residential resort structures with pitched roofs, planted roofs, and stone paved terraces will complement the site. Next, we have Mahaw Farms, which is designed by Howard Becken of Becken and Gillam Architects, a local architect based out of St. Helena. This is the largest community in the project and the village or the heart of the project. The cluster includes a winery, a winery, a sales center at the Hilltop Hotel, the village, and the surrounding resort cottages and residential villas. The winery is a small boutique winery offering wine tastings and production from the surrounding vineyards. Above the village is the Hilltop Hotel, which consists of eight individual bungalows and an open restaurant pavilion, as well as a location to entertain sales and marketing. The village includes a community clubhouse, 12 acres of market gardens to serve the true farm-to-table restaurant, an outdoor farmer's market covered pavilion, a cafe, artisan barns to include animal husbandry and an apothecary, a post office, a location for wine tasting, and an area for families to play bocce ball. The Mahaw Farm Village is centered around recreational activities with the Upper Bone Lake and Lagoon to be provided by paddle boarding and canoeing. This is the most dense part of the project and the closest to the main entry road for public and private guests to access. Moving to the next community. Located at the northern portion of the site, this area is designed by Denniston International and was previously referred to as Red Hill Estates. This community area is designed around the golf course and also offers a lodge and amenities. Guests arrive at the resort facility at a lower level and are introduced to the landscape, which they will traverse through in a curated path to the main lodge, extending their time and hopefully their appreciation of the surroundings. Amenities such as a lounge, bar, dining room, library, and boutique occur under one roof at the main lodge. Derived from the local Native American dwelling, the round form allows for maximum views of its circumference and takes advantage of the resulting interior courtyard, which offers a prime location for special dinners and events. Throughout the community, villas are placed in a variety of landscapes, including agricultural, wooded, and sloped. Denniston utilizes green roofs as well as simple pitched roofs, recalling agricultural vernacular on the site. Next, I'd like to describe to you the golf course. As you'll remember from the introductory video, the golf course has been designed by Tom Doak of Renaissance Golf. Historically, his course design has been consistently praised for its minimal ethos and for respecting the natural contours and vegetation present on-site. That's what makes them different from each other and from what others are building. The sensitivity of the site at Guanac Valley and our client's goals for the project present a chance to take the design to another level and to present a golf course which barely looks like a course at all. To assist in the sustainable course design, Tom has walked the site repeatedly and in the initial stages spent time with a biologist, walking the course to determine where the most mindful locations were for its siting. The non-returning course is unique in its configuration and minimal in its site impact. By stretching the route over two miles, it becomes a thin ribbon through the landscape, only recognizable as a golf course and not a lawn from the perspective of the golfer. The course is served by three houses at the first halfway and 18th hold. And these are designed by Denniston, providing consistency in the architecture of the cluster. The golf course is one of the main examples of how the land dictated the design. Next up, we have the Resort at Trout Flack Community. And this one is designed by Carrie Hill Architects. It is, in its essence, a minimalist complex designed in harmony with the natural topography. The commercial components include an entry and service pavilion, a resort center with a pool and hotel unit. It is a modest architecture inspiring the user's understanding of the sense of place, achieved with low-thin roof lines and green roofs to obscure the view of the structure. A cluster of simple store pavilions along the ridge line will overlook vineyards on the property. Inspired by the concept of low-impact eco-lodge, the plan positions each building according to the existing contours to minimize disturbance to the terrain. Combining stone plinth and ramp earth walls, high ceilings extend the feeling of openness and transparency from the exterior landscape to the interior. The site is detailed by outdoor spaces, a lounge veranda, and dining terraces overlooking a reflecting pool. This is the Spa Community, and it is unique as it is the smallest community cluster planned. And its programming is focused on the Spa and Wellness Facility and 11 surrounding villas. It does not include a hotel component. The facility is located on a plateau on the land and capitalizes on landforms to capture surrounding views. and capitalizes on landforms to capture surrounding views. The celebration of cultural heritage which inspired the veranda and courtyard has informed the design of the spa. The traditional concept of architecture typically defined by a singular space has been replaced by a blended interior and exterior design. Located at the Tentative Camp Area. Located along Poota Creek, the Tentative Camp Area is designed by Jan Kortler. The property will feature an escape within the most remote area of the property surrounded by the beauty of Lake County rolling hills and streams. The project includes a request for a series of tentative camp sites and limited accessory buildings. This area will offer seasonal opportunities for a very limited number of guests. In keeping with Jan's heritage on safari in Tanzania, the experience in the Tentative Camp Area will be focused on viewing and respecting the natural surroundings. I will now hand the presentation back over to Kirsty to discuss accessory uses on the site.
Thanks, Courtney. Accessory uses. This exhibit shows all of the accessory resort uses as designed as part of this specific plan and Phase One project. On the left side of the sheet, you'll see the two renderings of the backup house operations and fire station. On-site workforce housing located on the pork chart looking parcel on the west side of Bus Canyon Road includes 100 units. A strategically-placed emergency response center, including a fire station, emergency medical staff, and a helipad dedicated for emergency purposes. For guests choosing to arrive via float plane or helicopter, there is a welcome kiosk and arrival center conveniently accessed directly from Bus Canyon Road. The various hotel clusters will be supported by multiple facilities shown within these red areas, such as water and wastewater treatment facilities, alternative energy production, and various housekeeping or support facilities. This slide shows our onsite accessory uses, including the fire station and the backup house. Both of these areas were designed by Courtney, whom you just heard from Verses Design, and includes a modern agricultural design aesthetic. An offsite workforce housing location is proposed as an option within the EIR. This site is located within the boundaries of Middletown and would allow employees and their families to reside within the community instead of being housed on-site. This site will include a small park, a small community center with a gym and pool, and the property will be served by the Caliomi Water District and Lake County Sanitary Sewer and request a higher density to allow for duplexes within the inner portion of the property and maintains a single-family residential zoning on the exterior of the property. This proposal uses a total of 36 lots with 50 housing units. In response to some of the public comments, we wanted to provide a comparison of... In 2008, the county of Lake approved a tentative subdivision called Stone Brook Meadows on this property. As you can see on the right side of the slide, this approval included 49 residential lots. There were 31 lots on the exterior of the property and 18 on the interior. In comparison, our request includes a similar unit count: 50 units on only 36 lots. 21 single-family units on 21 lots on the exterior of the property resulted in a lower density, 10 fewer lots on the exterior portion of the property, to blend more within the surrounding land uses. On the left side of the screen, you'll see the site location in context to the surrounding area and on the bottom, the zoning categories with colors depicted. This slide shows aerial photography showing the surrounding lounge uses with the proposed subdivision overlaid into the existing site condition. This helps to put into perspective the size of the site and the density required and how the increased density in the interior allows for a lower density on the exterior. As previously discussed, the EIR analyzed the potential of the well and pipeline. However, I'd like to note that it remains an option as there are no current applications or requests for any entitlements to install a well nor a pipeline. The request is for a non-potable backup water source to secure financing. Now, I'd like to give the presentation and introduce Joe Rumco. He's a principal and landscape architect with SWA Group based in Sausalito since 1991. His work has focused on large-scale projects that balance development with the unique ecological and cultural aspects of the land with an emphasis on sustainable and resilient landscape.
Thank you, Kirsty, and members of the board, Mr. Chair. It's a pleasure to be here this morning, and I would like to say that as a landscape architect, the entire landscape team takes the inspiration from Mr. Zeca and kind of the quality and character of this place and preservation of the natural landscape very, very seriously and inspirationally behind all of our work. I'd like to say that the way we've approached the landscape at kind of a high level is to think of it in terms of what's really distinct about the site and its landscape character. And to that end, we've grouped the landscape generally into eight, I'll say distinct zones even though there's overlap, that really will guide the future landscaping and preservation and restoration as development occurs across the site. While, you know, there is some overlap, but it really gives us a framework to think about how to approach the landscape improvements in terms of new landscape, but also protection and preservation of what's there. This is a... We have sort of what we described as a light-touch approach to the site in terms of development overall, in terms of siting and grading and landscaping to integrate buildings, and then a heavy reliance on native and well-adapted plant materials over the long life of this project. One really unique and important aspect of the project is establishment of a long-term, very large-scale native plant nursery on-site that will propagate plants which are endemic to the site and to the region for use in the landscape development of the site. Next slide, please. Oak woodlands, and there's been much mention of this, are a very, very important part of not just the character, but I'd say more importantly, the ecology and health of the site. There are significant stands of oaks throughout the site, as most of you probably know, of five major species. And so the preservation and protection of the oaks throughout the site has been an important and serious kind of charge that we've all taken. There's a specifically designated open space corridor that was originally established in order to... partially in order to protect some of the more significant stands of oak and also to ensure the connectivity of important habitats. Within, as I mentioned, this designated open space corridor... Next slide, please. As you can see here, was originally identified in 2009 or as part of the 2009 Quaterright CIR that was mentioned earlier, and it remains in the same general vocation to offer basically dedicated open space. This will ensure the long-term protection and preservation of over 2,700 acres of land, and this will be a... Put into the combining district will be established as the project is developed. The open space corridor is preserved in conjunction with the additional habitat connectivity easements that Ryan mentioned earlier, as shown on the next slide. These easements were additionally... Initially not proposed, but then were proposed in response to public comments and further review as the project proceeded. These things, these corridors, were identified in the My Commiss Berriessa M2B Network Report published in 2018. And so the plan is now accommodated and incorporated. These additional corridors, as I said, was not originally envisioned to connect the open space from the open space through the site and avoiding development, and they're highlighted in yellow as you can see on the screen. I think Kirsty mentioned already this added an additional 425 acres of protected lands. The project also... I mean, there are lands that are sort of not... We call them rural landscapes. Non-dedicated areas are approximately 7,600 acres of land. This area is not forecast for development and will remain in its rural and agrarian character. I should mention that grazing management and continued grazing of these lands is... will be an important part of the use to improve the overall health and quality of the undeveloped land, but it's also a key part of our wildfire prevention efforts for the project. Wetlands and lakes and streams and all the riparian kind of environments on the site are really an important part of both the site ecology, the hydrologic quality of the site, and also the site character. So we have taken, and the team has taken, extensive care to avoid impacts to wetlands, waterways, improve existing site conditions. And for instance, in this case, the Mahaw Farm Lagoon is significantly expanding the stream and riparian corridors that are... and ditches, I guess, that are kind of exist in that area, restoring them into a more natural and healthy context. The benefits to water quality and aquatic resources in this area and throughout the site are significant. So at this point, I would like to introduce Cody Anderson, who will discuss the sustainable infrastructure and site development for the site. Cody is a principal at Sherwood Design Engineers, a site civil engineering firm in San Francisco, a North Bay native, and he's got extensive experience in the region and in terms of engineering sites with the whitest touch possible. Sherwood, I think, was mentioned, as Jonathan mentioned earlier, is the civil engineer for all the site elements, including roads, commercial sites, and utility systems. So Cody, over to you.
Maybe.
Jake, Cody iPhone is up next to speak, please.
Okay, yeah. I don't see Cody iPhone.
His phone number is 77799.
The last four digits of that again, I'm sorry?
8218.
Okay.
Find that?
All right. Can you give me a sound check there?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. Apologize, I'm quite remote today. Couldn't get the video to work, but thanks for the introduction, Joe, and thanks to the board and everyone for today. I will give a brief description of site infrastructure, and I'm going to start with the Phase One roads. Unfortunately, I can't see the slides, so let me... Can you give me a pause for a moment? So the existing ranch has a very extensive road network, approximately 72 miles of existing, well-developed and very well-maintained agricultural roads. And as you can see in the exhibit, the majority of the proposed roads are utilizing that existing network with improvements made to them to bring them up to current compliance with county, state, CAL FIRE codes. All the roads... All the proposed roads comply with the minimum slope requirements of 16% as a maximum slope, and most roads well below that. And we have two-way access roads that are a minimum of 20 feet wide plus shoulders. The green roads on this exhibit are existing roads that will be improved within the first phase. Yellow roads are existing roads to be relocated, meaning that they're being adjusted to avoid sensitive cultural or biological zones. And lastly, the orange roads are the new roads needed to complete the road network. All the roadways will be improved or constructed to accommodate two-way traffic lanes with 50 feet of defensible space on either side. And in an effort to have light touch on the land, we've done extensive modeling of the road in collaboration with site design and landscape teams. Speed limits and traffic calming techniques will be implemented across the site to ensure safe and shared access on all the private roads within the Guanac Valley District. Next slide is typical existing conditions. The existing ranch roads utilize onsite native rock, which is plentiful. They're mostly gravel, and there are multiple drive-through creek crossings, meaning areas where the vehicle actually drives through the creek bed. Typical example is shown on the current slide. The next slide illustrates a proposed crossing that will eliminate direct interface between vehicles and waterways by constructing new bridges and culvert crossings in full compliance with Department of Fish and Wildlife and State Water Board requirements. All road improvements will meet current stormwater requirements and minimize disturbance to landforms, hydrology, and local ecology, and ultimately will provide an improvement to the stormwater runoff quality from the overall site. Next, I'll briefly describe sustainable infrastructure. This project requires completely new ground-up... Well, below the ground and then ground-up utility infrastructure network to serve both the commercial and the residential developments. New electrical power distribution system will be installed underground with data networks in order to provide resilience against wind and wildfire threats, which is in exceedance of minimum code requirements. In addition, the project proposes to generate on-site renewable electrical energy with rooftop and ground-mounted solar systems for the purpose of achieving net-zero electrical energy. The potable water system will be provided by on-site wells with treatment, storage, and distribution facilities. Wastewater generated from the project will be collected, treated on-site to tertiary standards, and redistributed in a recycled water network to offset the landscape and potable water demands, non-potable water demands. Where relied upon propane tanks will be stored underground rather than above ground. And in addition, there's an on-site composting facility to serve the native plant nursery and agricultural operations. Lastly, to discuss the project commitments, I'm going to give the microphone back to Kirsty Shelton. Thank you.
Thanks, Cody, and thanks for making an effort to make it. So lastly, I wanted to discuss the project commitments and most importantly, the community benefits. A variety of strategies and actions will be utilized to reduce fire risks throughout the property. Strategies such as grazing, vegetation removal, and irrigated fire breaks will be used throughout the site's common, residential, and commercial landscapes to reduce fire risks. One of the primary project objectives is to become a model project of wildfire mitigation through innovative landscape management, fuel-purpose fire access roads, emergency action management, and animal husbandry practices with the intention to reduce the risk of fire. It is the project's commitment to become a fire-safe community. To achieve that goal, we have implemented multiple plans and strategies. Three of the largest project commitments that reduce fire risk include the undergrounding of both electrical and gas utilities, the requirement for both residential and commercial structures within the Guanac Valley District to utilize both exterior and interior fire suppression systems, and the maintenance of 50 feet of vegetation maintenance along every roadway to create a continuous 120-plus-foot fire break for safe egress for the entire property. As noted, every road is designed to be a two-way access and will have fire hydrants every 150 feet. These commitments are above code or CAL FIRE requirement and are huge commitments for the project to offer. For instance, the exterior fire suppression system will be installed on all occupiable buildings in the surrounding defensible space. The fire sprinkler system will distribute a water-soluble fire retardant that will be sprayed on the roof of the building. In addition to these site features, there'll be additional communication systems such as a high-resolution heat sensing early detection fire camera located on the highest ridge and communication with CAL FIRE, a traditional emergency siren, and a non-opt-out NICSLE-type communication tech system. As noticed on the plan, within Phase One, we intend to build a big fire station in the very first phase. As part of the Emergency Response Center, there'll be a large helipad that can accommodate the large water-tender helicopters. In the event of a wildfire nearby, these helicopters will be able to dip into and rely on the many lakes on the property as needed. Another project objective is to provide sufficient workforce housing options and educational training programs to expand the existing high-end hospitality and construction employment opportunities of Lake County. The project proposes an educational center to provide job skills with many diverse categories. These future employment opportunities include agriculture, administration, construction, equestrian, golf... equestrian, golf, maintenance, resort, winery, restaurant, and spa and wellness. In addition to the farmer's market and cultivation of locally grown food, there will be retail opportunities for the local artisans and farmers. For the most part, our presentation today and the specific plan of development focused on the designs for the commercial, hotel, and resort residential uses. We thought it would be helpful for the board and the public to see an example of a residential villa. The Figueres Design Group from Argentina digitally inserted the design plans and transposed them into the existing landscape.
Thank you, members of the board, very much for your attention to this presentation. I hope that you found it informative and that it gave you a sense of what the community will be like when it's there. Before you invite comments from the audience and from members of the public, I would like to refer to the letters that were received yesterday that Scott mentioned. As you know, one was a letter from the Attorney General's Office, and Anita Grant and I had a very productive conversation yesterday afternoon with their office, but we feel that it would be premature to try to address their letter today. We'd like to have an opportunity to speak with them again and to ensure that all of the points in their letter are addressed in a thorough and a measured manner. We feel that's very important. So for that reason, we would ask that after today's public hearing, that you continue this matter, and when you reopen the public hearing at your next hearing, that you allow us to address the letters and any other public comments in a coordinated response at that time. So, although that means that you'll have to see us all one more time, we feel that it's best for the county and for the project to have that additional time. So, thank you very much once again. We are available to answer questions that you might have for us before you turn it over to the public.
Thank you very much, Catherine, thank you. Excellent, well, we'll bring it back to the board then, obviously. I do have a question for Anita, and if you could help me through the process here with the request that was just made, obviously, for the continuance, is there a motion or an action that we need to take addressed by the board? Anita?
Hello?
Hello, Anita, there you go.
Yeah, sorry about that. Took me a while to, there are so many participants, it took me a while to find my name. In terms of how you proceed, again, it's truly up to the board. You can take public comment partially today and then take more at the time you continue it. You can take public comment as to particular areas and limit public comment next time to the new materials, though of course, as your board knows, that's difficult to do. It really depends upon how best you want to make use of the time. I do agree with Ms. Philippakis that the scope of the letter is such that your board would be well-served by having a thorough response from them and any commentary from staff before proceeding to take action as to this project.
Okay, and I guess my clarification question, and I'm in complete agreement, and I guess I will ask for the rest of the board's comment on that also, but I think having...
I'm sorry, sir, as far as continuing it, you can simply, you can do that by motion to a date and time certain, that way we won't have to re-note it.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much. So, today, what I'd like to do, I really appreciated the presentations, everything that was prevented, the videos, everything, but what I would like to do is hear public comment, but move towards the point of extending the public hearing and picking another date certain by motion from the board, if that is the board's feeling with the request. So, you know, I think we can do public comment at this point today and then address the extension of the hearing once public comment is over. If I could just ask of the board, go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
I think that I agree with that, because I think it's important to hear the public comments, because maybe that's something that might be embedded in the response that will be brought to us the following week, and I think it would save us some time if we listen to as much as possible today.
Excellent. Supervisor Scott?
I also agree with that.
Yeah, Mo? Supervisor Brown, go ahead.
I agree with that also. What I would like to do, though, I know you were talking about doing it later, but maybe if we could kind of get an indicated date now, so that way the public would know too, any public that's wanting to speak may want to wait until then to speak after they've heard all the info.
Good suggestion, Supervisor Brown. What, yeah, I guess the question would be, how much time do we think we need, Scott, Community Development, or Anita? Do you guys have any idea of on a date? Are we talking next week, or are we talking a little bit longer time for response?
Supervisor Simon, I've heard 14th and the 21st. I'm going to actually defer to the, I'm going to defer to the consultant and the developer. The lion's share of those responses are going to be in their hands, so I will, I'll defer. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Catherine.
All right, why don't we hear from AES first, because they have quite a lot on their shoulders.
Okay, Ryan?
Yes, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Wonderful. So, I believe we would be ready to discuss the responses by the 14th, but we may not have all the documentation available for posting 72 hours prior to the hearing. So with consideration of that time constraint, I believe the 21st would be better.
Okay.
And that's acceptable to us. I mean, I think we had originally planned to ask if you would continue it to the 14th, with an understanding that you might have to continue it one more time, but I think if Ryan feels that she needs until the 21st, that's also acceptable to us. We're, you know, want to accommodate the needs of everyone here, and we also don't want to waste your time and your schedule.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, could we have the Assistant Clerk of the Board take a look at our calendar for the 21st and suggest a time when we could schedule this?
Yes.
Johanna, can you pull up the calendar for the 21st?
Yeah, on the 21st, I have two public hearings already scheduled, one for 9:30 and one for 10:00. And the one at 10:00 is for the transit hub, so I don't, I'm not sure how long that will last.
I think that one will be relatively brief, so we could set this matter for 10:30, I think, on the 21st. Will that work?
Did I understand correctly that the offer was to put it on the 14th, and in case that not everything was accomplished for the 14th, that then it would be moved to the 21st? Did I, was that what I understood?
No, I, I think that was, what was talked about was the 21st. They thought maybe, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Ryan, you can go ahead and say it over again, but it seemed like the 21st would have an opportunity where we could get all the information in and plenty of time and be able to have a good productive meeting on the 21st. So, I think that was, you know, what was said, but Ryan, you can say it again if you want to.
Yes, I agree with that. I think the 21st is a better date, and that's mostly because there will be some revised documentation most likely, and we want to make that available on the county's website 72 hours prior to the hearing, so I think the 21st will be better to accommodate that timeline.
All right, so what we would do then, obviously, is we'd be looking for a motion to continue this hearing until the 21st of July at 10:30, was that the time?
Can we do the motion now, or do we want to do public and then do the motion? I don't know if it makes a difference.
Either way.
Okay, well, then, if it's either way, we'll go ahead and if we could do the motion now, I think, let's just get it taken care of, and then we'll go to public comment.
I move to continue this public hearing to July 21st at 10:30 a.m. after hearing public comment today.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to continue the hearing until July 21st at 10:30 a.m. Johanna, can you do a roll call vote?
Yes, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Now, what we're going to do is we are going to, if there are no questions from the board at this point, we're going to go ahead and open it up to public comment. Okay, it's seen none, so we're going to, Jake, we're going to go ahead and go to the hands that are raised, and I do see a few, so...
And Chair Simon.
...work through that process here, and I know, now, this is the first time we're doing this, this is a hybrid meeting, I do know that we have folks both in the audience, and we also have people online, so what I would like to do is go through the folks that we have online, and then Supervisor Sabatier, because I can't see the full room, if we could, once we move into there, if you could just ask the folks to come up once we get to that point.
Perfect.
Mr. Chair, shall I keep the two-minute timer for you today?
You know, I know this is a pretty big subject here, and I know we're going to have a multiple times, yeah, let's try and keep it at the two minutes at this point, and then I think, moving forward, when we get the final stuff, we will go back to the three minutes when we have our hearing on the 21st.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Jake, go ahead, and let's go through the hands that are raised in the room here, in the Zoom room, and then, once we're done with those, we'll go to the actual boardroom.
Okay, so the first hand that we have raised here is from Dan Gleason Camp. Should be unmuted, will you give me a sound check by confirming?
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good, yeah, well, thank you very much for taking my testimony. I'm Dan Gleason Camp, I'm the Executive Director of the California Native Plant Society. We advocate for native plants and the habitats in which they live, and we also advocate on wildfire and climate change issues that put humans and native plants in danger. And I got to say, all of these are problems with this project, as our allies have pointed out in writing, and as I think you're fairly aware. And thus, we are asking that you not approve the project when you meet in a couple weeks. The project has some really big problems with regard to native plants. The surveys are likely inadequate, just, you know, for example, they found 26 sensitive species, rare plant species, on the site, and the likelihood of 81 other species. These need to be found, you need more survey work to see if they're there or not. Moreover, the data in the public databases suggests that there could be as many as 180 potential sensitive plant species on site. And we got to ask, how did they miss over half the species, even as just a potential? Worse, we see no vegetation survey for the site, which actually kind of suggests that there's something to hide. Are there significant rare wetlands, underreported riparian areas, unique and special Lake County plant communities? We can't tell from the data. The EIR is designed to give the supervisors clear guidance on what will be harmed by this project, so you can make a sound decision. Massively incomplete information is a problem for you guys. I also have to say that, you know, water is a major issue. To me, it looks like a water grab, there's that big well in town in addition to all the plentiful water on site. And regardless, the region will suffer as more water is drawn out of the water table, farms, creeks, and the groundwater that supports the trees and the wildlife will dry out over the long term. As for wildfire issues, I got to say, just our San Diego County chapter has participated in at least four separate sprawl developments that are very much like this one, but one difference is that those projects all tried to create wildfire evacuation plans, unlike the project proponents here, and those plans were about 30 pages long. Recently, just a couple weeks ago, San Diego Board of Supervisors turned down one project 4 to 1. Voters voted down another one 60%, and the last two lost in court. Fire is important, and we need to have decent evacuation plans, or else everyone's in jeopardy and we, and we, another major disaster, as you know. And then finally, finally, as for climate change, the state of California has to go carbon neutral by 2045, it's the law. Everyone has to do their part on this, including cutting down vehicle miles traveled, and certainly not building large reserve communities out in very hot places where they're going to be running the AC all the time. We simply ask that this project do its fair share, like everyone else in California, nothing more, but certainly nothing less. So thanks again for taking my testimony, and we're available for, to provide additional information, trying to improve the project, certainly ask that you delay on considering it, and think about how to make it less impactful to the really beautiful environment that we all love in Lake County.
Thank you very much for your testimony, thank you. Okay, Jake.
The next hand we have up is Wade Skills.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Wade Skills. Thank you. Great, thank you guys for the opportunity to jump in here. I've lived in Middletown since 2002, I love this place, and my heart is here, I think it's an absolutely amazing community. As an architect, I have always wondered when and not if we would see development pressure on our town and in our valley. I'm amazed it's taken this long, actually. I've thought a lot about what that would mean to life here for better and... thought a lot about what that would mean to life here, for better and for worse. I've stood up against Dollar General as selling ourselves short for a bad business model and a bad county model. At the Middletown Area Town Hall, I've recommended an oak tree ordinance to protect against vineyard development pressures around my house as an example. However, with the Maha project, and after giving it a lot of thought, I can't think of a better, more ideal, low-density, seemingly eco-thoughtful development, and one that should tip the scale toward a vibrant, self-sustaining economy in Middletown and South Lake County. Of course, I do worry about water use and would like to understand more about that aspect of the project. Regarding the employee village proposed at Santa Clara, I have done some preliminary research into what this development might mean for the site and our town. I've discussed my ideas and concerns with the partners at Maha, and they have been receptive. I think if done right, if done well, this could be a very positive neighborhood addition to Middletown. While considering density, the neighbors, and Dry Creek, in my opinion, the project can and should reflect a cohesive village-style architecture to promote community and connectedness. With more rural flavor, with open space, more covered outdoor space, connected to the landscape, pathways and open space, plus walking and biking to town, where possible, reducing pavement, reducing heat gain, water retention, drought tolerance, gardens and play space, fire mitigation, obviously, would be important.
Two minutes.
It would be very truly great to see businesses stay open in Middletown and even thrive, since the fire, we've had a rough go of it. Many businesses, including our Boars' Breath Restaurant, have been vacant for years, and I'm not personally okay with this stagnant aspect of our town, and I will prefer a more sustainable and vibrant community. Lastly, Santa Clara will surely be developed by someone at some point. I can't think of a better scenario than with a developer whose image is paramount to its mission. After a lot of thought, I think this project is a great opportunity for Middletown and for Lake County. I want to thank you guys.
Thank you for wrapping it up, Wade. Appreciate your comments. We're doing everything we can to kind of keep it to two minutes, and I know you guys are doing pretty good. Let's just, we'll continue along those lines. So go ahead, Jake, let's go to the next one.
All right, the next one here, they raised their hands who speak earlier. I just want to check on 8218 here, just to make sure that you don't want to make a public comment. Okay, we'll just move on from that, because I don't think that, I don't think they want to speak.
Okay, Jake.
Okay, so the next person I have in line here is Chris Carlisle, maybe? Carlisle?
Yes, that's correct, Carlisle.
Okay, great, thank you. We can hear you.
Great. I wanted to speak today in support of the project. My wife and I have been members of the Middletown community for 26 years, raised our children here, and been very involved in working in the community. We obviously have a very deep-rooted interest in this community and the continued positive development and maintaining our Middletown culture. A few years back, I spoke in opposition to a similar large project at the same location. It was because it was not well thought out and did not at all resemble the thoughtfulness of this project. We support this project because it's very responsible environmentally, and that is what we've always wanted to see for our community. We have property that borders this project, and we'd be directly impacted by it. We moved out there for solitude, but we understand that it's about more than just ourselves, the entire community, and we have to look at the project as a whole. I feel that this project takes in the community's best interests, and this is a project that should be seriously considered for approval. I think this is gonna bring economic and educational services that our community greatly needs. I've had the opportunity to read through previous mitigated EIRs, the EIR from 1976, and some of the current, also the current property proposals. Everybody is gonna be impacted in some ways. Some are positive, some are negative, but there's no way to please everybody on this project. But we sincerely believe this is gonna be the best thing for this Middletown community, and we hope that it is successful and moving forward, and I want to thank you for the time to speak today.
Thank you very much, Chris. Okay, Jake.
Okay, the next hand we have up here is Annie Menuzzo. I'm gonna try unmuting you here, Annie. All right, looks like you're unmuted. Could you give me a sound check and confirm your first and last name?
Yes, my name is Annie Menuzzo.
Great, thank you. We can hear you.
Good. My husband, Robert, and I have lived in Cobb Mountain for 20 years, and I truly believe that the aesthetics revealed in these presentations and the safeguards represented in the reports both seem to protect and enhance the natural beauty of our county. I have served as a small business advisor in Northern California for 15 years. From that perspective, it is clear that the positive impact of the tax dollars generated and jobs provided by the Maha resort will provide a perfect lift for our county's economy. I would proudly support the development of the Gwinoc Valley Project. I do think it's important for them to answer as many of the complaints and questions that have been raised in the community, but overall, I think this is an extremely positive move for our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Okay, Jake, go to the next one.
Okay, the next hand we have up here is Monica Rosenthal. Monica, it looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Hi, good morning. Actually, this is Terry Holberg via Monica Rosenthal Zoom. She's kind enough to help me out with this process, because I will say it's been difficult. So I'm Terry Holberg, and I live in Middletown, and I understand that development will happen in our community, but I do have great concerns regarding the Santa Clara Avenue project. Yes, it is in my backyard. These plans were approved back in 2006, over a decade ago, prior to the recession. That doesn't mean that it's a good project now in 2020. It seems it was thrown out to planning to see how much could be approved, asking for a rezone to have more density. Fortified bedroom homes, some with granting units. These are not typical Middletown homes, and it doesn't seem to fit in our rural neighborhood. And it's not really in central Middletown. We've chosen to live in this small, small community, as I said, and this would change that and our quality of life for our town. How will it affect the wildlife? We enjoy seeing the hawks, the owls, and the bluebirds and other animals in the open space. What will the design plan be like? Is it gonna be two-story cooker, cookie cutter housing? Certainly, that wouldn't fit in this rural area, small town either. This is a dense housing project that could add four cars, boats, other vehicles per residence. So is there going to be adequate and safe parking for each home? Is there a garage, driveway space, and wide enough streets for parking? Will it overflow into other neighborhoods? What about safety issues for pedestrians? Will the housing be rentals or for purchase? Will it be for Gwinoc staff only or general public too? Will it be fire-safe, energy-efficient? Will it have adequate open space and friendly street lighting for those who like to start?
Two minutes.
In the country? Who will maintain the subdivision in the community house? I gotta speed this up then. This is a floodplain. If dirt is imported, which we hope it won't be, and certainly not from the Gwinoc project, since it's mostly serpentine and not good for any construction, is there a plan for their own water retention? Again, we have great concerns for flooding on our properties that would block the flow of drainage from our properties, and what would be done to prevent this from happening to us? Could the project be moved to the 37-acre site to Gwinoc? The well site is to be drilled, is also a community concern. Would water be directed to Gwinoc only? What of our existing water and well sites? Please don't forget the Superfund site just down the road that's affected other property wells in the past. There are debris piles on the Santa Clara Avenue property with, will an analysis of the content be done to determine a hazardous? Should there be a separate EIR for this? What about road improvements? They're not currently county-maintained. Would access via Office Santa Clara, a secondary access if Park Avenue? Could one side be sidewalk for pedestrians' safety and one side remain in a natural state so not to overdevelop the neighborhood? Again, a new community, should a new community be based on old plans? And a lot has happened to our county in the past years. I feel it's important to get it right the first time. We should be receiving the same considerations that have gone into the Gwinoc development plan. They're in for not intruding into nature, low density, and, right, our concerns of low impact environmentally. Friendly development doesn't seem.
If you can kind of wrap it up here.
I just said a couple sentences. It doesn't, it doesn't seem to, the density doesn't seem to have been addressed completely for me. What about, they were saying, what about paying reverence Santa Clara Avenue? It's a beautiful property, too. The investment is so great at Gwinoc. They have a 12-acre garden. They're talking about developing 12 acres into housing. Preservation of natural landscape, a light touch on the land, plant additional trees, preserve wild habitat. These are all really, really big concerns. So thank you for listening.
Absolutely, Terry. And like we said, we are continuing this on, so there'll be some more information, and thank you for your comments today.
Okay, then, the next hand we have up is Victoria Brandon. Trying to unmute you here. All right, looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
I'm Victoria Brandon. I'm here representing the Sierra Club Lake group.
Great, we can hear you.
So I'm delighted to see that the Native Plant Society has gotten into this conversation, and hope that the issues that will be addressed by the consultants in the next couple of weeks will include their concerns. I certainly bow to their expertise on these issues. I've got other concerns I want to express today. First, we submitted a letter yesterday raising issues about CEQA compliance in the general plan revision, and I would like to confirm that that letter was received.
It's in our attachments, I believe.
Yeah. Okay, good. I felt fairly sure of that, but wanted to make sure. So that is, it is an issue to, that the project is supposed to start, the environmental review process is supposed to start, by listing all the entitlements that are being requested and then address them in the environmental review. And this kind of, this change in the general plan was not incorporated at that time, and I think it's imperative to maintain the integrity of the planning process, that it be addressed in the environmental review, which is going on now. And since this is being postponed for another two weeks, there is going to be time to do that, and I certainly hope that that is one of the undertakings that the Community Development Department and the consultants are going to address. And also, I was very interested to hear Scott DeLeon's comments at the beginning of this meeting about the primacy of the area plan over the general plan in this connection. I think there'll be people who want to bring that up again in connection with other projects, if that, they come before you, because we've heard the opposite contention on quite a few occasions. But I'd also like, was interested in his remark about the 400 residential units which are being proposed at this time.
Two minutes.
But the total entitlements requested for the residential development in the rezone is not 400 units, which is consistent with the area plan. It's 1,400 units, not counting any workforce housing that might be built on the site. And this inconsistency with the area plan, if the area plan is to be considered primary, is something else that has to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Okay, Jake.
The next hand we have up is Ross Mittlemus. All right, you should be unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Morning, Supervisors. My name is Ross Mittlemus with the Center for Biological Diversity, nonprofit conservation organization. The center submitted extensive comments on the draft EIR for this project in April, and we've continued to be surprised and dismayed at the haste with which the county has moved forward in an attempt to approve this project. We repeatedly asked the county to give members of the public the time they needed to review the changes and new information EIR and associated planning documents that were made, not made available for review with the draft EIR. While the decision to continue today's hearing will, will address these concerns in part, it demonstrates the project's rushed and incomplete analytical approach thus far. This process has repeatedly forced the public to make what the county referenced as 11th-hour interventions. Yet, the county and applicant have made hasty amendments attempting to address these problems without adequate review. The center remains deeply concerned about the significant environmental impacts from this project, including impacts to biological resources, water quality, greenhouse gas emissions, water supply, wildfire, and public safety. The project will have a devastating effect on the habitat and wildlife of the project site, including oak woodlands, riparian habitat, and critical migration corridors. The project will also significantly increase car traffic and vehicle miles traveled in the county at a time when California needs to drastically reduce car travel in order to meet its statewide goals for greenhouse gas emission reduction. Finally, the project's low-density sprawl in remote wildfire-prone location poses a serious threat to the safety and well-being of people on the project site and residents in the region of the project. Dr. Thomas Kova, a preeminent expert on wildfire safety and evacuation in California, reviewed the EIR and expressed his strong concerns about the process, stating, quote, "The county did not perform a project-specific wildfire evacuation analysis. Even in the absence of such analysis, there is strong evidence that evacuation times could exceed lead times for the project, which could pose a serious threat to public safety," end quote. Lake County is still recovering from recent destructive wildfires that impacted residents, property.
Two minutes.
Firemen. The county should not subject its communities to higher risks of more catastrophic wildfires in order to build high-end luxury resorts and residential accommodations that serve high net worth individuals, which are the target clientele of the applicant. Given the unaddressed environmental concerns noted above and in our FEIR comments submitted yesterday, we urge the board, in the name of public safety and environmental stewardship, to deny all project approvals. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ross. Okay, Jake, let's go to the next comment.
All right, the next hand we have raised is from Maria Ruttenberg. All right, Maria, it looks like you're unmuted. Please confirm with your first and last name.
My name is Maria Ruttenberg, and I'm a trustee of Day Foundation that owns Middletown Mansion, who is a direct neighbor of the proposed development.
Okay, go ahead, Maria.
Yes, so I wanted to discuss this project a little. We bought this property, I would say, a few years ago, way before we knew about the project. We bought it because we wanted a peaceful place for our nonprofit retreats. We do teen projects, we do nonprofit retreats, we host weddings, we do civil work, we like the setting, we like the community, and we feel part of it. We took a long time to review the project. We were in contact with the developers, and I was very impressed to see how well and thought out the processes. I wanted to comment about two things. As an owner of the mansion, a lot of people come and stay in Middletown, and a lot of them unfortunately leave for entertainment to Calistoga. So we get people who are willing to spend money, who end up going to Calistoga and spending their money, because frankly, there's not much to do in Middletown. And this needs to be changed in a sustainable, friendly way. And I think this development is an excellent example of how it can be done with satisfying the fire concerns, environmental concerns, and reasonable, sustainable development for the area that's gonna help pretty much everyone who lives here. I wanted to comment on two things. First of all, the fire access and the fire safety. The default right now is huge space of land which is completely open to fire. The way the developers are proposing to do it is gonna be much safer and much better, and I'm all for it. And I'm actually a direct neighbor of the project. So if anybody should be concerned, it should be me. I'm working in the project. And the second thing I wanted to talk about the environmental. There is an optional off-site well, which happens to be directly on my site, and I did look at the environmental provisions proposed, and I'm completely happy and safe with what they're asking. So the water access is not a problem, and to me, it looks absolutely safe and good. I hope you guys support the project. It's been in the works for many, many years. Many concerns raised so far has been addressed. Many concerns raised so far has been addressed already, and I'm sure going to be addressed again. And overall, I've seen a lot of projects like this. I would say this is the most sustainable and beneficial to us as can possibly come, so I hope you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Okay, Jake, let's move to Joe's phone.
All right, that's, yeah, the next hand that we have up is Joe's phone. All right, it looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm with your first and last name?
Yeah, Joe Sullivan.
All right, we can hear you.
Oh, good. Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I support this project. I currently live on, or moving to Grange Road, which is in the area of the project. And I think that a lot of comments have been made about the economic benefits to the project, which I believe will be of our community, but I think there's also other benefits to our environment as far as our family lives and our, and the way the Middletown is now compared to where it was before and where it needs to go. Currently, I've been involved with community projects for the past 19 years. I was involved in math for several years. I was on the Planning Commission for a few years for District One. And I've seen, you know, you go to a meeting and it's the same people running all the meetings all the time, Middletown Days, our rodeos, math meetings. So, and over time, people have moved away, and people have quit because they've gotten frustrated, because there's not enough help for things, and so we've lost, or we're seeing the losing, uh, losing rather, of our, of our traditions in town. And I think that when people talk about the survival of Middletown and how this could change it with people coming from out of town, I think they're missing the point, that those are people that have kids and lives too, and those people will probably be interested in the community. And, you know, they could volunteer to help coach. One coach can take 10 or 15 kids. If you get 10 people, new people that are, have the, some excitement to do something like that, that potentially, that's 100 kids that could do something, or learn something that we don't even offer right now. And they were talking about the commute time or the automobile traffic. Well, as a local, a lot of people would be able to shorten their commutes. Several people.
Two minutes.
For hours a day. And so they can't volunteer for things. They can't participate in community functions because they get home late from work. So I think that's, these are really important things to get overlooked when we're talking about stuff like this. You know, bringing new people into the town would support our businesses, you know, local businesses. Even if the residents of, that pay for the hotels and stuff are staying there on the, on site, we have the workforce, you know, trades, all that stuff will be, not just during construction, but they'll have to maintain it going forward. So, I'm in full support of this project, and I think that we ought to be thinking about, you know, supporting Middletown through the project by inviting, having more people come in, having people to have a better job, so maybe somebody could be, you know, two-family household, maybe one of those people could work from the town, not have to commute each day. As a person that commutes each day, 45 minutes each way to work, I understand that. So, I'm in full support of the project, and I hope you will too. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Great, Jake.
Oh, okay, so the, um, sorry, the, the next hand we had up, I believe it was Jane Yurkovich? Yes, it looks like you're unmuted. Confirm your first and last name for them?
Yes, my name is Jane Yurkovich.
Okay, great.
Uh, yes, can I start now?
Yes.
Thank you. I've been coming to the area for over 20 years, to Harbin, and I recently became a homeowner in Anderson Springs. Judging from my conversations with the neighbors, this project is greatly anticipated by the community, and I wanted to comment in support of this project. I believe it will bring economic vitality to the area of Middletown, which seems kind of in decline and stagnation, with so many businesses looking very decorated. What a beautiful vision for this land. I'm so impressed, and I'm glad I watched the whole presentation, and I'm very impressed. And again, I am fully in support of this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Jake, I think that has, that has gone through the hands that are up at this point.
So, yes, I, I do think I lowered somebody's hand that last time on accident, so if that person is out there, will you please raise your hand again? For the time being, I do have interest from a Shannon Williams person.
Again, we will go to the boardroom for hands raised when we're done with the online hands raised.
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, Shannon Williams, I, I tried to unmute you. Will you give me a sound check?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Will you please confirm your first?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, this is Shannon Williams. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi. So, my name is Shannon Williams. We have been, my family has been longtime South Lake County resident now for 15 years, and I just wanted to voice my support of the project as a local business owner, as a local parent, and an involved community member. I'm super excited about how thoughtful this project is, from the design to the willingness that the owners are taking to invest in locals in the community as well. Personally, I have three children, and I'm excited about the job opportunities that this is going to bring for not just the youth of our community, but also just the residents in general, people not having to drive over the mountain, the, the variety of jobs I'm excited about, from entry-level jobs to potential management of resorts and things like that. We don't have that here, not much anyway, and so I'm very, very excited about what that means for our community in general. So, and then, I'm also a real estate agent, and I just see nothing but a lot of interest in our area for investors, but also, there's a ton of cannabis growers, not that there's anything wrong with that in the right spot, but I'm excited that it's, it's bringing something other than that to our county, and I see it really helping hold property values and bringing interest to our area and helping our residents retain their values. So, that's, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Okay, Jake, let's go to our next hand up, and we'll see, it's Lisa Kaplan.
Yes, all right, here she, it looks like you're unmuted, Lisa. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Lisa Kaplan.
Great, thank you, we can hear you.
Yeah, so I wanted to express my support for this project over at the Guanoc site. I think that they've done a wonderful job designing a project that takes into consideration the local environment and how to preserve it, and I do believe that they, given the time, they will be able to address the concerns that have come to light today in this meeting. I do, however, have concerns about the Middletown section. I do believe it should have its own EIR, but most importantly, I would really appreciate, and I know that Kirsty is coming to the Middletown Area Town Hall on Thursday, which is 7:00 PM, and it will be via Zoom, to, to speak and answer questions to the public, and I think that that's imperative, and that the COVID crisis has really taken our attention off of some of the details that I think we do need to be paying attention to, because that addition of, of a subdivision will have an impact in town, and, and the people of Middletown really need an opportunity to respond to that specifically, separately from, from the Maha resort, because they're very different projects. So that's my input, and thank you very much for this time, and I wanted to thank the Maha people for, for considering the public and for considering our local environment and for partnering with us.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, Jake, at this point, that looks like the hands that were up, we've made it through there. Like I said, again, this is obviously a hybrid meeting, so now what I would like to do is go to, Bruno, if you can take over for the folks that are in the boardroom for the comment.
Sure. First up, we have Joan Moss, who would like to speak on this issue, on this agenda item.
Thank you very much, Joan Moss. I heard that there is going to be an off-site well. I don't know why that's necessary if there's enough water onsite, and then a couple minutes or an hour or two later, they talked about onsite wells, and they talked about fire protection. I want to know if they've already figured out an evacuation site. I know that we heard a lot about renewable energy, and now we have a superfund site nearby that proposed development. I want to know where seniors who don't have internet connection can read about this. It's 1,000 pages. It's very heavy reading. Thank you very much. I have questions, as usual.
Thank you, Joan.
Next up, we have Mr. Ken Porter. Oh, no. Sorry, wrong name. Mr. Fletcher, sorry.
Fletcher Thornton, Middletown, California. I, I've been around this project since, since day one. I was fortunate to be chairman of the town hall in Middletown for a number of years. And when this first came up, I was fortunate to be chairman, and so I was in on the ground floor. And I had my personal, I'm going to talk about my personal experiences, not some in-the-air thing that could be, that would be, that may be, that, all, all the other things that people bring up. I'll give you my personal experiences. When I first heard about this project, I was a little afraid of it because it was so large. It was, it was gigantic at the time, and it's still gigantic. So, I, I was a little nervous about it, and I reserved my judgment on the project, but because of my connection with Maha and those people that are the owners, I was able to go to a lot of meetings and just sat as an observer. And I was in meetings where I was, I'm not involved in it at all in any way, to the extent that I work for Maha or anything like that, but I was there to listen, and they were very kind to let me sit in. So I have seen all of it from the day one, how they feel about things in the community, how they feel about the environment, how they feel about that ranch. I have an advantage over most people that talk about this project, in that I have ridden every square foot of that ranch on horseback, gathering cows for the top line cattle. So I know that ranch backwards and forwards, I know every, every piece of ground on it. I've been on every one of them.
Two minutes.
Thank you. And it is a beautiful piece of ground. And I have watched these guys develop a project that not only thinks about the environment, but they think about the, the people that are going to be driving by, and the people that are not going to be living there. The way they've used it, the topography of, of the land, how they use the valleys and the hills is just a miracle. It's just a miracle that they have spent this much time making that project into something that we all, all of us in Lake County can be proud of. And I know in my heart that the vision that they present to us someday will be a reality, and for that, I'm grateful to the developers, and I count myself lucky to be here to watch the beginning of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Fletcher.
And I apologize, Mr. Fletcher, I believe Mr. Porter was next to you and said the wrong name.
No problem.
Anybody else in the chambers wish to make a comment? Okay, the rest are just here to listen in, so we're done over on this side. Chair Simon.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Superintendent Spock. You know, ultimately, appreciate all the public comment today. What I will do, for one last thing, we'll have Jake open up the room in case anybody wants to make one final comment today, and then we'll bring it back to the board. Okay, go ahead, Jake, open up the room.
All right, I'm going to open up the room here. The room is open. If you would like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, let's go ahead and close it up and bring it back to the board.
All right.
Excellent. All right, I want to thank everybody, community development, all the Maha folks, AES, everyone that came in and had public comment on this issue. As you know, the board, we're going to move this item, the public hearing, to be continued to July 21st at 10:30 AM. I know there were a lot of concerns that were brought up in this meeting, but there were also a lot of support for a project like this that really could be a game changer for the entire county. So with that, there's no action to be taken today. I don't know if the board wants to have any comment at this point, or would wait until we finalize this thing here on the 21st, or continue on those discussions. So go ahead, and the board, do you have any comment at this point?
I do have a comment to make, if I could.
Go ahead, Superintendent Spock.
Thank you very much. Just for full transparency, I do want to let the public know that I did go on a tour of the entire facility or the entire project. I was out there with JB that we were speaking with earlier, with Kirsten earlier as well, and I believe the other gentleman's name was Andrew. They showed me around, showed me where the polo fields would be, where all the villas would be settled, where the golf course would go, just the lay of the land. I have to say, it is an absolute beauty back there, and we should be really honored to have such beauty in our area in Lake County, and it's just, one of those reasons we live here is exactly why that area was chosen, because we love the scenery. They obviously found that same, that same feeling as well. The way that I look at it, first off, is whenever somebody's going to do a project, and it's a, a commercial business project, most people try to use the maximum amount of that project's space for their, their revenue streams, their income, to maximize that. And, and to me, the fact that they are sprawling this project out in such a small footprint, when you look at the entire 16,000 acres, says something about how they want to treat the land. Now, granted, that doesn't mean that we don't have to look at every aspect of it, whether it's the water, whether it's the native species of plants, all, all those things do need to be scrutinized, but I, the way that I feel, the way the project has been approached is to make sure that that land remains serene, because that is the reason that they want to come here, and if we change that landscape, if they change that landscape, then it would change everything for why they chose that piece of land. I'm going to paraphrase something that JB told me, that his partner Adrian told him, is, "You see this beautiful landscape? Whatever you do, don't mess it up." Because that's exactly what they want people to come to there, once it's done and completed, they want people to enjoy that exact same view that they have of a barren piece of land right now that they get to enjoy. So with all the work that's been done, I appreciate them putting all their efforts into that. I appreciate all the effort of the staff, working with them to get all this EIR out to us, get all these staff reports out to us, and I, I do have, not horrible concerns, but I do have some concerns. And one of them was, when I was looking at, I, I obviously spend a lot of time looking at the water, because I've gotten a lot of feedback from people that are worried about the water. I, I think that the way that I read it and the way that I'm understanding it, that the water should not be an issue, and once it comes to us as well, both Chair Simon and I are on LAFCO, those things will be heavily scrutinized as well before being approved for any kind of connection to Caliomi or anything else. We want to make sure that whoever is connected is not going to be negatively impacted by additional connections and, and the likes. additional connections and the likes. So I'm not worried about that. But the transportation, I believe it was under transportation, there was a lot of optional lights that were being offered to be placed on Highway 29. And right now, it seems that the direction that we're going is to get rid of the lights. For instance, in the city of Clear Lake, we've been having conversations with Caltrans to get rid of the lights, maybe even doing overpasses so that you don't cross the highway. They really want to get rid of those slowdowns on the highway. And so to add all these additional lights seems to be, and I know it was an option, but it seems to go against what Caltrans trend is right now. And to me, the trend is, we're going to be putting roundabouts. And maybe in certain of these intersections, roundabouts is not an easy thing, or maybe it's not even a feasible thing. But that's what I would like to aim for, rather than adding more streetlights. I know they talked about it at Butts Canyon. I know they talked about it at Tubbs Lane. I know they talked about it at other areas as well, and Tubbs Lane not being in the county, but talking about putting it there. I just want to make sure that we keep moving in the direction and the trend that we're starting to follow right now, rather than adding more places to stop as you're moving freely on the highway. So that's my biggest thing. As well, the main impact that I see is not necessarily from the folks that will be guests over there. I see it more as a daily commute for those coming from their workforce housing, which is what's being discussed over at Santa Clara. Because at that point, you need to go through Middletown, and then you're going to have to hit the intersection of Butts Canyon Road in order to go down. And so any way to facilitate that process, because that's what the new roundabouts at Hartman Road was all about, was to help facilitate that process. We knew that before that roundabout, there was at least 30 to 45-minute wait between going from Lower Lake just to get to Hidden Valley, let alone going all the way to Middletown, because there's so much commuter traffic going over the mountain into Napa County, and then coming back home, it would be the same exact process. So I want to make sure that whatever we're doing, we are looking to make sure we don't go backwards on that, and that we keep looking how to better the flow of that traffic, rather than going backwards. My last thing was, I was looking at the developer agreement. And while the developer agreement looked good to me, there was one glaring omission that had me concerned. It was kind of touched on in the presentation today. It was the community benefits, and I believe it was Exhibit Page F, if I'm correct, on the development agreement. I don't have it open right in front of me. If needs be, I can get the exact letter that it is. But it was community benefits, and it was blank. And in the presentation today, it shared with us some of the community benefits, but to me, when I read them, they're more the typical indirect benefits we're going to see from any new business that comes into play. If you're going to have a restaurant, well, now it's a new place for people to eat. There's your benefit. It creates more attraction for tourists who are coming through to want to stop by. So to me, I saw the, I see the project, and I understand what the indirect benefits are. But what is a benefit that we can talk about and discuss and negotiate, which is typically going to be involved in a developer agreement? And I don't want to negotiate live right here in a public meeting. Those should be done in closed sessions and then brought back to us to review it for approval or not approval. But seeing that page blank, even though it was there, was slightly concerning, and I'd love to be involved in making sure that there's something that we can discuss, whether that's... anyways, I'm not going to go into the details of what I think should be in there. I think that's a negotiation item, which is always held behind closed doors until it goes for approval. So those were my main concerns. Other than that, I think I'm appreciative that they saw our county the way we see our county, and that is exactly why they're offering to do this project right here. So it's exciting times to be discussing this project.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Anita.
Thank you, sir. I think that what Supervisor Sabatier is referring to is part of the Planning Commission documentation, where that may have been blank. If you look at Exhibit O, I believe in community development, can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that the community benefit section of the development agreement is described on the last page of Exhibit O.
Thank you for that clarification, Anita.
And I'm looking at it right now. Must have missed it.
Well, it's a little bit confusing, because the same documents are separately numbered for the Planning Commission, as the Planning Commission attachment. So it would have made sense to look there, but it might have been because it was still in progress. That might be why that was blank.
Okay. All right, any other comments from board members? If not, I would just like to thank Community Development once again, all of our developers that are on the line here, and consultants. This is a large project, like we said, and, you know, we'll have more comments as we go into the 21st on July. And I want to thank the developers of Maha for, as Lisa said, they will be attending our Thursday night meeting of MAF, which is very important to be integrated with the local community, and I just want to thank you all for that. So there's no more comments from the board at this time on this item. We're going to go ahead and continue this public hearing to July 21 at 10:30 a.m. Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move right along. There are some things I'd like to bring up for our community, our constituents. What I would like to announce, both to the board and to the community, is that we are going to postpone the Economic Development Workshop that we had scheduled for 3 p.m. today, both with Supervisor Brown being out. And I am also having to deal with an emergency where I'm going to have to leave earlier than I expected. But what we're going to do is go ahead and try and work through the last three items on the agenda. We will get that rescheduled. Carol, are we going to bump it just everything one week, as far as the economic development? Is that the thoughts on it? I think that would be...
Well, not necessarily. I'd like an opportunity to speak with you offline, since we will have a matter on the agenda for the 21st. It may not be the day to also have the final Economic Development Workshop. So I would suggest we look at what else is needing to be addressed in that agenda. It may be too much.
Okay, excellent. And then with that announcement, you know, appreciate everybody who's waiting or may want to comment on those. But this time, I just think it's, you know, better to have as many board members obviously involved in that conversation, and these are unforeseen circumstances today. So what I would like to do is move on with the items that we do have left on our calendar here. And I would also like to make a comment. Earlier, I made a comment about there were maybe some potential problems with MediaCom or other things like that. And I just want to make it very clear, it must have been just a weird anomaly that was going on, that someone had texted me. Everything seemed to be fine. So I just wanted to make that comment that, you know, it must have just been one individual who had texted me and said they were having problems. But it did get fixed, and I just wanted to make those comments. And clarify, there were no problems with MediaCom or the other things. It was just the individual who thought there were larger problems. Moving right on, along to our next items that we have on the agenda, we have Item 7.2, Consideration of Advisory Board Appointments to Lake County Resources Conservation District. And go ahead, Carol. Oh, it's the clerk of the board. I apologize.
So we have three appointments for your consideration to the Resource Conservation District, one in District One, then one in District Two, and one in District Five. And these are all reappointments. So the applications have been received from those that are already serving in that capacity, but their terms are up. First is William Lincoln, and the recommendation is reappointment to represent District One. The next is Shula Shoup, and the recommendation is to reappoint to District Two. And last is Harry Lyons, the recommendation is to reappoint for District Five.
Excellent. And I see that Victoria Brandon is also here. Victoria, are you here to comment on the Lake County Resources District? Conservation District, go ahead, Victoria.
Yes, I am. I'm the, a director of the RCV Board, and I'm the secretary, and I'm just here to tell you all that these are very valuable members of our board, and we fully support their reappointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Okay, any public comment on this item? Okay, I don't see any hands up. Jake, can you open the room up?
Yeah, I will open up the room here. All right, the floor is unmuted. If you would like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, seeing none, go ahead and bring it back to the board. Are there any comments? Bruno, if you could check, are there anyone who would like to comment inside the actual chambers?
I don't see anybody with their hand up to make a comment.
Okay. All right, we'll go back, go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
So, Mr. Chair, as you know, it's customary for the district supervisor to make the appointment for his or her district. Supervisor Brown had to leave the meeting, and so one of you may want to make it on his behalf, or, I mean, since it's an incumbent, that is probably a safe action to take, or you could wait until he can be available next week on that one.
And, Mr. Chair, I was thinking, since one of the applicants is in your district, and that we would probably make the motion for you, that I might as well make the motion for all three to reappoint the, if it's okay with the District Five wanting, to reappoint all three.
In District Two.
And, Mr. Chair, it is appropriate to do them in one motion to one body, so that would be...
Okay, yeah, I will accept the one motion.
So I move to approve William Lincoln, Harry Lyons for District Five, William Lincoln for District One, Harry Lyons for District Five, and Shula Shoup for District Two, to the Advisory Board for Lake County Resource Conservation District.
Seconded by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, if you'd please do a roll call vote.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Cranble?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
And Supervisor Brown's absent. Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Congratulations on the reappointments. We will move to our 7.3 item, Consideration of a Cannabis Tax Internal Grant Program.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just, I'm going to introduce this, and then Patrick and Susan, Patrick Sullivan and Susan Parker will speak to it. As your board recalls, last year, you asked us to create an internal grant program using cannabis tax revenues, where county departments could apply for some of the cannabis funds. And so what we have before you today is a pilot program that we'd like to implement in fiscal year 2020, 2021. In fact, we'd like to get this process out quickly enough that departments can apply, and those that are selected would have the funds appropriated in their budget, which we'll come back to on September 24th. We're proposing this as a pilot project, and we're establishing a situation in which a department could request up to $100,000. At this point, we propose that a total of $500,000 of cannabis tax funds be made available. And it should be proven that the Community Development Department will receive funding separate and apart from this to establish a staffing unit that is dedicated exclusively to cannabis. We would not expect them to come for these funds, because they're, you know, very directly involved with cannabis. And then we also use some of the cannabis tax funds for the salary of our tax administrator, Patrick Sullivan. And we would not be competing in this, for these funds, for that purpose. So I'll turn it over to Patrick and Susan.
Good afternoon. I can share a little bit more detail about the program and what our intention is. We've created a form that departments can fill out. At this time, it's our intention to give priority to proposals that support law enforcement, environmental protection, water quality resources, and youth programs. And that stems from the original cannabis ordinance. Those were the priorities that were identified by the voters, and previously, your board had expressed its desire to try to stay true to those. So departments are eligible to apply, but priority will be given to those proposals. Currently staffed proposal is that a panel will be established that can then review any applications submitted by departments. And we're hoping, we'd like to set the deadline to be July 15th for departments to submit. That would give enough time for a review process to occur, and have this wrapped up in time for the final budget process. And I think that sums it up. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Mr. Chair, I would add what our thoughts are on the composition of the panel that would review these communications. Our vision for that panel is that it would consist of Assistant CIO Susan Parker, Deputy CIO Patrick Sullivan, our tax administrator. We would request one representative from the Community Development Department, and we'd also like to request two members of your board to sit on that review panel with us.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Discussion from the board. Some reason I'm having some... Can't...
I'd like to say...
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, thank you very much. So I submitted these ideas as well to Ms. Hutchinson, just to see if it's something that we could do. I think it's good to put on the form a reminder of what the voters asked for. It doesn't mean that it has to be that, since we did discuss this already with Ms. Grant, and it's a general tax, it can be used however it is that we feel it should be used. But having a checkbox system that says, "This is related to law enforcement, this is related to water quality, environmental protection," and I'm not sure if youth programs is necessarily what was the intention. I think it was more along the line of youth education for like drug abuse or something like that, but I could be wrong. And then maybe putting in other checkbox, so that it's just something completely outside of that scope of the four that the voters got to read about when they voted on this. So I think that would be a good one, a good suggestion for that. I don't know, I understand the reasoning for wanting to get this done by July 15th, but I'm not sure that that gives ample time, at least for this year, to get things done. And I'll just give a perfect example of a group that I'm a part of, the Middle Creek Restoration Project. There's a lot of funding needed, and it's absolutely water quality based, it's absolutely environmental protection based, but we won't be meeting until the following month to be able to approve of putting in for something like this. Now, granted, that doesn't mean water resources can't put in on their own, but it would seem that that would be the more appropriate way. And at the same time, it's, I just think July 15th is too early. I'd like to see if it needs to be extended. And I think that just, to me, it's a simple budgeting thing. How much are we allocating that can be used this year? And that's how much we put in the budget, how it's actually allocated to specific projects, as long as it doesn't exceed what's budgeted, then I think that should be easy to be able to maneuver through. Just my opinion, maybe I don't know the hardships of going through that, but that's the way that I see it. And I got another question that popped up during Ms. Hutchinson's summary. And just a clarification, we're saying right now that we're using some of the cannabis taxes for Mr. Sullivan's salary, due to his efforts in making sure that this tax has been resolved, and the need for better clarification on how it's collected and how it's used, and also for the potential cannabis division that's been discussed. Is that correct?
Yes, not a part of the money we're proposing to put out for these grants, but part of the other cannabis tax revenues we booked.
And are we supposed to go through an approval process any time that we dip into this account to utilize for things? Because I just don't remember, I don't know if that's going to be in the next budget, and that's why I haven't seen it, or have we already done that before? And it's, I've never seen an approval process for the use... we already done that before? And it's, I've never seen an approval process for the use of these tax dollars.
Stephen Carter is correcting me and telling me that Patrick's salary is paid by administrative fees, so that is my error. And the development of the, um, cannabis unit that CBD is working will be in your September budget.
Okay, okay. Cause I, I, I thought that there would be a process for us to approve these things and that seems to be the case in, in this moment. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Sabatier. Um, I wanna thank, uh, you know, uh, Admin and, uh, Patrick and everyone who's worked on this and, uh, also Susan, uh, to bring this back to the board. Ultimately, um, we wanna make sure that we're trying to utilize these funds in the proper way, but also just to utilize the funds. And I think it's, uh, it's a good idea to start in, in this fashion. So, um, I myself obviously would be interested in being on the, you know, the, the selection committee if that's, uh, you know, what we're talking about today. But, um, yeah, I think it's a great thing as we're moving forward.
And I do have, uh, something extra. I'm sorry, I missed something.
Go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
Thank you. Um, I know that on there it says $500,000 and I'm curious as to, um, outside of the scope of collection for the year 2019, 2020, what was collected prior to that? And, and there's not really a need to, to answer the question unless it's, uh, readily available, but that's the amount that I think we should be looking at, not a rounded number of 500,000. I think that as a community, we voted to make sure that we collected these dollars. If we're not using all of the dollars and we're holding on to something, we should know why we're holding on to something. We should spend what's allowed for us to spend, cause it's meant to benefit our community.
And your board can certainly decide to spend as much as you want. Um, we just picked a figure to get this started with the assumption that this is really just an initial round. Um, so you absolutely can direct us to spend more if you so choose.
Okay, thank you Carol. Uh, any other supervisors at this point have comment?
Yeah, Chair Simon, I'd like to make a comment.
Uh, thank you Tina, go ahead.
You know, I'm, I'm really thankful that we're finally moving forward and, and looking to spend some of this money to, um, better our community. I also would love to sit on, um, the committee to review, um, the applications. I also think we need to make sure that we're being thoughtful, um, when we are using this money. So I think we're almost rushing it when we're trying to get proposals in by the 15th. So I, I would like to also, if we could, extend that timeline so, um, departments, um, can make a thoughtful effort and, in using this money.
Okay. Thank you Tina. So, uh, I know two supervisors have brought up the timeline. Um, you know, I don't know, do you have a comment Supervisor Cranble?
Yes, um, I do think that, uh, it would, it would help if we could extend it. That would be a good idea. And, um, I am glad that we're able to start moving forward to use this, this funding. Um, I did have the same questions as Bruno, so I don't really wanna re, you know, rehash that. So, when it comes to the amount and, and if we could use more and however that works out, um, I would like to move forward in that fashion because there are numerous projects that needed and, um, I know that there's a lot of departments that need to use this funding as well. And so I'd like to see it be used. That's all I really have.
So, we're happy to extend it. We can, um, when we issue this, uh, we're still going to issue it quickly if you approve it. Um, I, I suppose we can ask departments how much time they think they need, but this isn't like, uh, a grant application a department will be filling out to an outside funding source. This is basically two, two pages or so of documentation. So, and, and our hope really was to have this all budgeted so they're good to go, uh, September 15th. And so we talked with our budget officer, Stephen Carter, about what timing he needs, make sure that's reflected and that's where the, the timeframes came from. But your board can also amend your budget anytime you want to. So if we don't make it by September 24th and 25th, when you have your budget hearings, we can always come back at a later date too. So, um, but again, the, the intention here was to keep the process really simple, so departments could respond quickly.
Okay. So, I, I guess the, the question, and maybe I missed it, uh, the extension, would, would you, you would just push it out to the 30th or are you thinking any dates or did you give a date? Did I miss that? I apologize.
We could realistically push it out a week or two and probably still keep within the budget cycle.
Okay. Uh, would that be acceptable to the folks who are asking for the extension or are you looking for more time?
And I could speak on that if you don't mind.
Go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
I, I would say that for anybody, like the, uh, status that I was sharing of the, uh, committees, uh, that we're on that might be interested in asking department heads to, uh, look at this, I think that would give us the ample time needed to do a special meeting if there was a need for that.
Okay. All right, if there are no more comments for the board, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, do any of your other board members have comment at this point?
And, and I'd like to ask, uh, the same question I asked. Do we have that data readily available on what was collected prior to 1920?
Lynn, do you have audio? Apparently we do not Supervisor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have Patrick here. One second, please.
Sorry about that, accidentally got muted there. Um, yes, I can provide that data. There, if we're looking at the total that was collected, um, it comes out to, oh, 1,279,000. So, in 18, it was 267,000. Uh, then 2019 through 2020, uh, brought in the remainder, first 526,000, then 486,000. So that total right now is, uh, 1.28 million basically.
And, and what, cause I'm looking to not count what we're supposed to collect for this season, which really started in the new 2021. Uh, holding what we collected in 1920 cause we wanna make sure it's safe, that nobody's gonna ask for anything back because all of a sudden something came up, like we want, we don't wanna have to find more money. Uh, but before that, it was about, how much again? I'm sorry, I, I got confused cause you went backwards and then you went forward.
Okay. So, 267,000 and then 526,000. So, basically just under 800,000, I think is the number that you're getting at.
Okay.
793.
And that's, that's what I would like to, to see the board approve for us to look at spending to again, benefit our community. That's why we collected it. It's safe money to spend.
So, I can add the, some of the other things that we're waiting on is because community development is going to be seeded with funding. We're trying to withhold some of that. Um, there are also a few other variables here. We've applied for state funding with Proposition 64 grants and we don't know what we're getting at. We're hoping to find that out, um, within the next few months. But for instance, we applied for that for code enforcement, so there may be state funding coming in, but we don't, we're, we're not sure yet where we stand on that.
Okay.
Can I add something real quick? This is Stephen.
Go ahead Stephen.
Over at Patrick's computer. So, when I did my initial review, there was about 750,000 that hasn't already been spent that theoretically would be available before what Patrick just talked about. So, 750 would be available and then minus if we do any of these other activities like he spoke about.
And you're talking about cannabis, cannabis division being one of those things?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, their fees should cover themselves, but they will need some startup.
Right, right, right. It'll take at least a year to cover.
But because we haven't seen their proposal for what that unit will look like yet, um, we don't, we just don't know how many staff they're proposing and what that, what their proposal is. So again, this really is intended to get this started. Um, uh, initially, we were suggesting $500,000. You can, you can change that anytime you want. Um, we can put this out to departments. If we get a lot of pushback on the timing, we can adjust that by a week or two. So, my recommendation is that, that we give it a shot.
Okay. And if I-
Okay, I, I agree. Uh, go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
I would like to see, um, the cannabis de-division go through the same process in the sense that, why aren't we doing for other departments what we would be doing for the cannabis division? That way we can look at the full bulk of money and how it's being spent rather than dissecting saying, for this department, you can go through this avenue. For this department, you go through a different avenue. I wanna support the cannabis division, but I think that it should go through the same avenues as everyone else. Um, and then we can prioritize how it's spent rather than, uh, this seems to, uh, bifurcate the process.
Supervisor Sabatier, um, I guess I do have a comment to that. You know, um, my comment to that one, uh, Supervisor Sabatier would be, you know, this is the thing, the, the cannabis division is what's gonna drive that revenue and, um, if there would be a, a simpler path or, as you said, bifurcating, uh, the process, um, you know, I just think that that would, uh, kinda make sense, uh, that being that that would be the division that's gonna kinda drive everything through community development that, you know, it really would, you know, that'd be something we need to, uh, get up and operate in as soon as possible. So, anyway, tho- those are my thoughts on it.
I, I have a thought on that also. I don't know if, I guess you can't see me Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, I can't. For some reason, I got going on with my screen.
Okay. Um, you know, I would actually have to disagree with Supervisor Sabatier on that. I think these are two different items that we're looking at and that the cannabis division should not be competing, um, with this money at this time. Uh, maybe later on down the road when we look at, you know, really how much money we have and how much we're looking to spend, then maybe, um, look at that process of, of how much we wanna put in each bucket. But I think right now, um, I, I don't think they should have to be competing with this 500,000 that we're putting out. And I also agree that starting with the 500,000 is, is the way to start and not, um, um, put all our money out there right now. And just to really see how these programs are going to work and how they're going to benefit our community. Um, I, I know it's gonna be great to see their proposals, but I, I would also like to see how it's gonna work out in the end. Um, are we getting our bang for our buck?
Okay, are there any more comments from the board at this point?
Yes, I just wanted to, you know, I wanted to state that, uh, if there is room for more funding, I just, I know in, and not just in my district, but all districts, that there's a lot of backup in the Community Development Department. And, uh, I know it's because of the, um, the grows and the cannabis, uh, situation. So, because of that, it's put a, a very big hindrance on a lot of other projects. So, if there is room for more to be able to assist that department, I, I would greatly appreciate it because, um, it would take care of some problems, I know for sure, with, uh, with more help. So, I do understand the need and, and the desire to start at the 500 just for a pilot, but at the same time, I, I think we need that help in the county, so.
Okay. So it sounds like we have a consensus that we wanna get the project going. Uh, talked about, um, obviously extending the timeline. And then, um, you know, I'm in agreement with starting with the 500,000 also, just so we get this thing out and rolling. And then, uh, things can come back and be presented, so. Okay, any more comments from the board?
So I'm, I think I'm hearing consensus to go forward as proposed to give some flexibility to department heads with the submittal timeline. And, um, tell me if I'm misunderstanding you, but that's, that's what we'll do unless you're telling me differently. And, uh, um, in terms of the panel, it will be an informal panel, um, that will just be reaching out to two of you. I, I, but I've heard from several of you that you're interested in serving. So, um, how would you like to resolve that, Mr. Chair?
Well then, you know, if, if, um, you've already had an idea about, uh, reaching out to folks who wanna, wanna be on the panel, I just, you know, obviously I would always be willing to sit on any panel or discussion, uh, or at our committee. Uh, just wanted to put that out there. And, uh, but if, uh, you know, I think some other folks, uh, on the board would be, um, be willing to step up, you know, I, I'm fine with that too. It is just a selection panel so we can get it out there. Um, and I know that, uh, like I said, uh, if it's just, you're just gonna reach out to us, we can figure it out. If we can't, we can come back to the board and do something, um, you know, uh, at the board level. But I'm fine reaching out, yeah.
And if I can comment on, on that, uh, or actually ask, ask a question, a follow-up question. The, uh, this would be an advisory board or a final destination board where the board makes a decision and that's it? Does it come back to the board of supervisors to, uh, make a final approval of the allocation of the funds and the committee is just advisory?
You bet, in your budget.
Okay, so either way, it'll come back to-
24th. Yes, and at that time, this committee can definitely explain its process and who all applied and which ones are being recommended and why.
Right.
Okay.
I, I, I'd be interested in being on the committee as well, but since it comes back to the board of supervisors, I'll still get my say on, uh, uh, and express myself on the decisions. So, I'm okay either way.
Yep.
So am I. I'm, I'm fine. I don't, I, I can wait till it comes back. But I, I did wanna also just mention that, um, I know, I know that the departments will be putting in, you know, their applications. Um, is there a way for them to put in an application that requests like maybe a wish list, if that makes any sense, that that way this group can look at, hey, these are the, either the next go around or hey, we can actually fit this in. So then at the decision time, we can say, you know, we realize we could spend about another 250,000 or more, let's go ahead and, and up it then. Or, or like Carol said, when we decide to change the budget, if we decide to change the budget or have a special meeting or something like that, we can go ahead and do so at that time. Uh, just, I just wanted to see if that's possible, that's all.
Well, well, certainly it is, but, but the thing that I wanna stress really is that this is just an initial foray into getting this money out there. And if our projections for our next fiscal year come in as anticipated, there are going to be additional amounts. So, um, so I, you know, I just think the path we're headed on is gonna lead to that. So, um, and we'll probably get more proposals initially than, than we're looking to fund. Your, your board will be able to decide then if you wanna fund more. If not, those, uh, could become waitlisted after you're suggesting. So you bet.
Okay, layaway.
Thank you Carol. Okay, any more comments from the board? Tina, I can't see if some, um, if I don't hear any other comments. Uh, we'll go ahead and, um, open this up to the, um, the public for, uh, public comment.
Good afternoon Supervisor Scott DeLeon. Um, a couple of, uh, actually a question and then a comment. Um, as, uh, Community Development Director, uh, our budgets are due on Friday and, um, my plan is to actually have them done on Wednesday. Uh, so you will be seeing, uh, our, uh, proposal for the cannabis division, uh, at the end of this week. And, um, and then, uh, my question for you, uh, with, uh, with a different hat on, uh, from Water Resources, uh, will, uh, multiple, uh, applications or multiple requests, uh, from the same depart, department be acceptable? Or are you looking for us to prioritize internally, uh, for the projects we submit?
So in this initial round, um, what this states is that departments may submit a single grant proposal for fiscal year 2021 for an amount not to exceed 100,000.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay Jake?
All right, so it doesn't look like we have any hands raised. Uh, so I will unmute the floor here. All right, the floor is unmuted. If you'd like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, the floor is open on, on this item. If you'd like to make a comment, please, uh-
Yeah, I was wondering if you had any of the ACO SCX 24s in, or?
Jake, I don't think that's a relevant comment.
I don't think so either.
Okay Jake, let's close it up and bring it back. Uh, do we have anyone in the boardroom, uh, that would like to make comment?
I see none in this boardroom.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll close it up and bring it back to the board for, um, for action. Do we, do we need a formal action on this?
Mr. Chair, the, the memo indicates provide direction to staff, which you can do by motion or consensus.
Okay. You know, I think we have a consensus at this point. We do wanna move forward. Uh, you know, what I thought I heard- You know, what I thought I heard obviously was the 500,000 dollar starting mark, and we'd worked through the other requests, Carol.
Correct.
Okay.
And we'll reach out to two of you to sit on our panel.
Okay, thank you very much, Carol. Moving right along with our agenda here, consideration, our seven point four item, consideration of John T. Kloss Trust and direction to staff for future efforts. And this would be presented by Public Services.
Hi, good afternoon. Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. And make sure you can all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I appreciate the time today. The intent today is to provide your board with an introduction of the details of the John T. Kloss Trust. If subsequent to the presentation and the discussion, your board is supportive of the concept, we would, we would then come back to your board with, well, with quite a bit, but certainly a resolution that would, that would effectuate what, what, what the board's desires are. So I'm going to jump into the presentation. I do have some slides to share, just due to technical limitations that I have, and maybe to your benefit, you, you don't see my face, but you will see some, some slides here. So I'll do a screen share. I believe that I'm set up to do that. But before I do, just a brief narrative of what the, what the concept is today. So the County of Lake, specifically Lake County Parks and Recreation Department by, by name in, in the trust, is named as a major beneficiary, will be the main, major beneficiary of property and other assets of the John T. Kloss 1994 Trust is the name of it. In 2019, last year, Mr. Kloss passed away, which, which then put everything in motion here. The trust assets that are bestowed to the county, just to briefly summarize them, it's about 600 acres in Clear Lake Oaks for, which is intended to be for park use, which we'll go into here in a bit. I am going to try to share my screen. And if you see it, let me know. It's there, should be there now. So you should be seeing just a map of the county. On the, on the right side, down by Clear Lake Oaks, the east, there's a pin and some, some lines. This is a far cry from the Gwinoc Valley presentation. Now, you're not going to see any horses running across here, but I'm going to, you know, we'll do my best to just depict where this area is and some of what it has to offer. But the trust assets are 600 acres, more or less, of property that was owned by Mr. Kloss in Clear Lake Oaks. His intent by bestowing this to the county is that that property would become a, a public park under the name of John T. Kloss Park. The, the assets, there are other assets that are bestowed, I'll use that term bestowed to the county, whether that's the right legal term or not, I apologize. But other assets that are bestowed to the county include other off-site properties, some of which have been sold by the, by the trustee, and, and others that are, that are still for sale. But other, the other off-site properties are appraised, those that have not been sold, appraised values of about 650,000 dollars. Bank accounts are also included in there, which as of right now, add up to about 1.5 million. That was from existing bank accounts, but also the profits from, from property sales that occurred after Mr. Kloss passed away. Also included in, in the, in the trust is a, a commercial property that's owned in Livermore that for the past 20 years or so, or over 20 years, has, has been under a lease with a, as an oil change business and among other things. But it's the ground lease that, that the trust owns, and it generates about 127,000 dollars per year. So, so those, those, you know, four asset categories, the, the park property itself, or what might be, that might be a park property, other, other off-site properties, bank accounts, and this commercial property all, all come, you know, add up together to, to be the, the assets that, that are assigned to the county or could be. There are some conditions that are listed in the trust for the county's acceptance. The first, I mentioned already that the, the park property, the 600-plus acres in Clear Lake Oaks would, would be a new public park under the name of John T. Kloss. Also, the condition is, and these are, the words used in the trust, is that one-third of, the rear one-third of the property is to be a wildlife refuge. So another condition is that there's a, there shall be areas of the park set aside for youth sporting and athletic activities. Other, another condition is that all the funds from the trust, profits, any profits generated by the trust assets or fees received from activities at the park are to be used solely for improvement and maintenance costs of the park. Additionally, the, the funds from, of the trust are to be held in, in a separate account from the general fund or other park or recreation funds, so they're not to be commingled. And then finally, annually there's to be an independent audit of the, just to ensure conformance with, with these conditions. Let me go ahead and present this. I'll present in the sense that I'll be, will be flying to the, to the property. Hopefully this is coming across all right. So we're just, just to give you a sense of where, where we are, down by the roundabout at, at the intersection of Highway 20 and 53, the property lines are approximate, they're certainly not, not exact. But that is a little over 600 acres. It's six separate parcels, but they're all owned by the, owned by the trust. What you see to the, to the west is Clear Lake, the Clear Lake lava quarry. So that gives you a sense of, of where we are. So just give you a 3D perspective, just one to give a sense of topography. You can see that it's, it's a mix of orchard and, and grassland, and then the hills are primarily kind of the, you know, chaparral and, and oak woodland. So it gives you a, you know, there is a, a lot to offer there. Moving on to a picture, this is a panoramic photo of taken more or less on the west side of the, of the property, looking to the west, so you're looking at Mount Canock Die, gives you a, gives you a, just from one location on the, on the property, what it does have to offer. I have toured that, that property. It's, it's been under, since Mr. Kloss died, there's basically been a caretaker there who's been, whose responsibility was to, was to basically clean it up. There was, there's a lot of, a lot of garbage to, to be simple, and a lot of cleanup effort that still needs to occur. But, and a lot has occurred. But there, there's still much to be done. But I, you know, I've, I've toured the, the property over a handful of visits. Supervisor Crandall and I toured the property a few weeks ago. It's, it's my opinion that, that, you know, it really is an excellent opportunity for the park or for a park. And I will say that it's primarily, if not solely, due to the, the dedicated initial and recurring funds that, that come with this. So, you know, I'm, I'm excited about it. And in my opinion, it does have a lot to offer. But I, you know, heading into this thing, just trying to do it with eyes wide open and not be, you know, not jumping in. So that's, that's why this item really is, is a presentation item. The, you know, the recommended action, probably very, very vague, you know, basically we're looking for staff direction at this point. We did not draft a resolution to, you know, to accept it. There's, that would be a subsequent action, which, which we would, would be probably the first action that we would take. But there's, there's obviously a lot that would have to, to be done either concurrent to that or after that. You know, examples, the titles, property title search, establishing that separate fund, you know, to, to ensure that they are separated from, that the funds are separated from any other general fund dollars. And then the, the long-term, well, short and long-term planning of, of this property. You know, we'd be looking at a, at a very large park planning project. We do have, you know, we have a park advisory board that I think would be the, a good starting point for that. But a, a lot more to come on this. But I, I simply wanted to present the, the, some of the, well, what's on the table through the trust and then give, give some sense of, of what the, what the park has to offer. So at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions and recognizing that this is, is far from, here's what the, the park could be or can be. I, I didn't want to taint, for lack of a better term, I didn't want to taint what, you know, what the park can be. That's something that would come after the fact. At this point, we're just spelling out the details of, of what the trust, the conditions placed upon the county through the trust and, and ensure that the board was aware of those. So, so with that, I'll, I'll end my presentation and answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Lars. We'll go ahead and open this. I just like to start that I, you know, I think obviously it's a good project. Appreciate the information all put toward, through our email and everything as far as the trust. There's one thing also that I thought was very encouraging about it, not only with the finances that come with the opportunity of the project, but also I thought he mentioned in there, making sure that there are some, some youth fields and, and other thing like that, you know, in there. And I think ultimately, you know, that, that's a great benefit, you know, to move along, not only with just the park and the trails and everything else. So I really liked the youth aspect, too, that was involved with the trust.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is Anita. I can't find my raise hand thing anymore.
Okay, and I'm having some problems, too. So go ahead and if I don't see you, just go ahead and talk.
That's probably my fault. I'll stop sharing the screen and maybe others can, can go for it. So.
No, I don't, I, probably operator error on my part. I, I just wanted to make sure that everyone is clear that these conditions that are imposed on this gift, the board has, has two choices. You can either decline the gift or you must accept with those conditions. I wanted to make sure you realize that. Also, I'm assuming that the properties that still haven't been sold will be sold before the county takes control of anything because taking the properties means you take them subject to any particular issues that might be attendant, which, which means that you'll have to do some groundwork, literally, to ensure that the properties are actually saleable. The other thing that I would point out is that the annual lease income is from a property in Livermore that's been leased to an oil change business for over 20 years. Generally, oil changes can have various environmental concerns. So it's, I'd recommend that that be looked into as well, so that you can avoid any concerns with the EPA or other agencies.
Okay. Uh, go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier?
Well, I wasn't raising my hand, but I do have something to say as always. I'll gladly say something. I know that there's a process that we're taking on in the Middle Creek Restoration Project, and that's called an environmental survey assessment or something like that. And, and I'm wondering what, because basically the ESA is to make sure that we are being full, fully disclosed of all the information before purchasing a property, so that if there's environmental impacts that we need to get rid of and clean up, that we're aware of those things in the purchase price and whatnot. I'm kind of curious about the same thing for this situation. What kind of, what kind of inspections will we be doing of the land prior to saying yes, if we choose to say yes, to make sure we don't get ourselves into a situation where we're having to clean up a, a major mess that we might not be aware of. And I know that these were not expensive, at least maybe not 600 acres, I don't know. But they weren't very costly for the Middle Creek Restoration Project processes. And wondering if that would be something that we might want to take on prior to just saying yes, because it sounds good. Because this sounds, this sounds amazing. There's a lot of opportunities. The vision that I have just in what can be done there is immense. But I also don't want to make sure, I want to make sure we don't step in something we're not aware of.
Okay, this is Lars. I'll just, I'm sure Anita has, has some comments there, too. But I, what I can say is that I'm familiar with an ESA, I mean, not intimately, but, but I, I think that's certainly wise and, and would be one of the, the next steps prior to signing on the dotted line of, of yes, it's ours. What I'll, I'll tell you has been done thus far, Lake County Waste Solutions, which is the franchise hauler for the area and also manages the hazardous waste processes for the county, they toured the site and put a proposal together to do a cleanup of the, basically the personal property, but that did not extend to cleanup of all the, all the standing facilities. But, but certainly it is, you know, reasonable and I think wise to take that, that approach. So I just, I just offer that. And I, there are, there are certainly funds available, as we've talked about. And I think to, to answer Anita's question, not all the properties have been sold. And whether they would be, whether those properties that are, that are, that remain to be sold would be sold prior to us coming to, to the county, you know, taking ownership. I think it's something that we would, we would want to discuss with the, with the trustee.
Yeah, that, that becomes really complicated.
Okay. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, so I toured with Lars on June 24. And if you've ever seen the movie Once Upon a Time in Hollywood, that's kind of what it reminded me of in one of the scenes. But it was, it was very sparse. It had a lot of different buildings and it was, it was nice to see some animals running around in different bunches. You had a pony and a, and a ram running together. It was weird. But, and a horse. There's a lot of peacocks everywhere. It was a, it looks, looks like a good potential for an initial stop when you come in from Highway 20, after that roundabout, an initial stop. We don't have a lot of areas like that. And it would, it would just be, I think it would be a good addition. I know that it would be complicated. And from what I understand, as Lars had mentioned, there's, there's funding that comes along with, with the, with the trust. I, I see it as a positive. And I know, I, I just think, I think we should do our best to look into this and, you know, accept and move forward from there. But I, yeah, I'm already sold. So. There's a, you know, you can do trails. In, in a lot of the, a lot of the designation of what we can do is already lined up in his trust, from what Lars explained to me. And so, you know, any projects that can help the community, I think would be great. I'm willing to go through the process of ironing out what we can and cannot do, and also going through the, either the ESA process or even looking up the property searches and whatnot. The cleanup, if that's already a bid in place, I think it shouldn't be an issue. But again, it was a, I see a lot of potential. So, yeah.
Okay. Supervisor Scott?
I see this as an amazing opportunity, not just only to be given a plot of land, but funding that goes along with developing it into a park and, and maybe even funding that comes to us yearly to make sure that we have the funding to, to the upkeep. So I am definitely in favor of looking further into this project and see if it will work for Lake County.
Okay, yeah. I, I think I stated at the beginning, I think it's definitely something we should look into. I know we got a lot of homework to do on this, and I know Lars did a good job with that and coordinating what everybody needs to be done. But that does look like an opportunity. But we do need to vet that, the entire project and move through that process. So I'm in favor also of moving forward with exploring this opportunity. Okay, any more, any more comment from the board?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is, this is Lars. Just I wanted to add on to that. And I appreciate all the commentary because the, you know, really the reason we're here is, is not to say yes, as you, you know, it's, you know, to, just to ensure that the, the auction was, was thrown out on the table because, and, and so that, you know, the smart folks in the room can, you know, add the, you know, the, the, the things that we need to consider moving forward and just to ensure that the board, we have the board's direction before we invest a whole lot of time onto this. Whether they, whether it does take a whole lot of time or not, but whether it's an ESA, the, the real estate issues, that there's a lot there. You know, staff is already, you know, spread thin. And it's, it's helpful to ensure that we, we do get the board's support before we're to ensure that we, we do get the board's support before we're, we're spending our, our time on, on something that may not be where the board wants us to, to be spending our time. So thank you.
May I make, may I make a comment? Chair Simon?
Go ahead Supervisor Shabatia.
So I think to me, the most important thing, because obviously, I mean, not obviously, but to me, this looks like a great opportunity. But to me, the greatest things that we need to look at is economically, how does this fit into our abilities to actually maintain the property in the future, is what we're going to be collecting from these other resources in Alameda County, I believe it is, from the other trust location, going to be feasible for us to be able to make that land look good. Because the last thing we want to do is take on a liability. We want to take on something that's going to be an asset. And so I think that further information to let us know what's it going to cost for how many much, how much, how much more staff will be needed to make this possible? How much is that going to cost us, the actual maintenance of it itself? Because we don't want to take on 600 acres that right now is a potential wildfire danger, because I know there's been a lot of fires in that location at least around the Moose Lodge. I don't know if it's that property specifically or those properties specifically, but there's a certain danger of being the owner of that property. And so I want to make sure that whatever we take on, we know we can handle and it's within our capacity to handle that. So I think those are important questions as well before saying yes. I'd like to keep moving forward as in taking interest in wanting to say yes. But I think that there's definitely some important knowledge that needs to be gained prior to making that final decision.
Thank you Supervisor Shabatia. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, and I just wanted to ask Anita one more question too, is, in a situation like this, you know, I was thinking about it, just playing in my mind too, is we, not only do we have to follow all of the trust guidelines if we agree to accept this, and, and of course, I just want to reiterate that I'm just in support of looking into this further. I would like to move forward. It's not, it's not an automatic yes. I know that there's situations in, in between. But back to my question, Anita, is this something that would, you know, it could pretend, is it very legal? Is it going to take a lot of legal work, like overwhelmingly, a lot of legal work, do you feel?
Oh, it won't, it won't overwhelm us Supervisor, but it's going to be, I mean, there's, there's quite a bit to do. It's just important to make sure that when it comes back to your board, that your board can be assured that due diligence was, was effectuated. That's the whole point. Because it, it is a wonderful opportunity, but your board is responsible for consequences as well. So, so my office is happy to work with Lars to ensure that you can be satisfied of the results of due diligence here.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you for asking.
Thank you Anita. Okay, any more questions from the board?
Nope.
Okay, here none. We're going to go ahead and open it up to the room for public comment. And I see we do have someone with their hand up, Richard. Jake, if you could help get him up. There, it looks like you're unmuted.
Mr. Chair and members of the board, this is Richard Knoll, Richard Knoll Consulting. Thank you for the opportunity. I, I don't have a whole lot to say other than I have a client, Mr. Don Van Pelp, who owns the Clear Lake Lava Rock Quarry. And he has actually reached out to the county about his interest in having a discussion about the possible acquisition of a portion of this land. He became aware of the, the trust and the offer to the county and understands that it's kind of an all or nothing kind of situation in terms of the way that the, the, the trust is structured. But he would like to at least have a, the, the ability to have a discussion with county staff about options or possibilities or if there are none, he'd, he'd like to know that as well. And the interest, of course, is related to the mineral resources that are on a portion of the land just to the north of the quarry.
Well, you know, I think all of that is a little preemptive, obviously, because all we're talking about today, you know, the county, we don't, we don't own anything or have control of it. But I guess Lars, you could answer that a little bit better. But we, we don't currently at this point, I think, drive any conversations, but.
Yes, that, that is Lars. That, that's correct. And I'll defer to, to, as usual, to Anita here. But they, looking at the, at the trust, we are the first beneficiary. And if we, if we fail to meet the conditions of, of the trust, which, which means using the, using the, the park, well, the properties shown on the, that I showed on the screen as a public park, John T. Kloss Park, under the, the other conditions that I spelled out, if, if we fail to meet that, then we forfeit any of the assets and they, well, all of the assets, and it goes to a, a second beneficiary, which is named in the, in the trust. So yes, it's not, you know, it's really not something that, that we can have discussions with, with anyone right now. And, and I would, you know, even, even if we did accept it after that, I, I, you know, it would have to be subject to the conditions of the trust. But I, as, as usual, I certainly defer to Anita on that.
Mr. Chair, Lars is, is correct here. It, it's just a little too early to have these discussions. As I said, there's still a lot of moving pieces and the fact that not all of those collateral properties, not the park that would be devoted to a park, but collateral properties haven't been sold. There's still a lot of moving parts that I'd recommend that, that we look at, staff look at for your board so that you have a complete and full picture. And if there's any opportunity to consider, you know, any outside proposals, you'll know better at that time.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't see any other hands up in the, Jake? Can you go ahead and just open the room up?
Yeah, yeah. Also, open up the room here. The floor is unmuted. If you'd like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake. Go ahead and close it up, bring it back to the board.
All right.
Oh, actually, are there anyone in the boardroom, in the chambers that would like to make comment on this issue?
Thank you for asking, but nobody's raising their hand for this item.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll bring it back to the board. I think it was information only. And I think you have somewhat of direction that we dare some interest from the board to at least keep looking into it and bring more stuff back to us once that is available.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you Lars.
Thank you Lars. Okay, we'll be going back to our 7.1 item, which is calendars. I think it's our 7.1 item. Calendars. So go ahead Supervisor Shabatia.
Let's see. I believe tomorrow's LTAAPC meeting was canceled, so that's not going to happen. We have Supervisor Crandall and myself will have a meeting with Senator McGuire's office, Congressman Huffman's office, as well as some of those from the Potter Valley District to discuss that item. Looks like I just don't have that much on my list. Looks like I will be able to make it actually this afternoon to the CSAC 3:30 meeting, since we seem to be finishing up our meeting today. On Friday, I'll start my day off with the EOC. I haven't made it to the EOC meetings in a while, just to get an update on what's going on with our COVID-19 cases. We'll be joining in the Room Key meetings, which right now, it's kind of an interesting situation. Project Room Key was turned out because of COVID-19 in order to help some of our homeless, to get them sheltered, and especially the high-risk folks. And now they're turning out Project Home Key, which is not necessarily a next step for Project Room Key, but it's a different program where there's funds to purchase houses that are empty, possibly dilapidated, fix them up, and then offer them as potential homes. I don't have all the details for that, but it sounds interesting. Not sure how usable or how beneficial it would be for here, but just wanted to make sure the public and the board was aware of those monies being put aside for Project Home Key. And then coming back again on Monday for the 13th, for another EOC meeting. And what do I have here? Another Room Key meeting, then a meeting with Ms. Hutchinson, which we seem to constantly either negate and put a new meeting on top of that for other reasons, or just not able to connect. But we connect via email, so it's easily done. But that's so far what my next week looks like.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Scott?
This evening, I'm going to be calling into Senator McGuire's, having a wildfire preparedness call this afternoon, or this evening at 6:30. Tomorrow at 9:00 AM, I've been invited to a countywide strategy to help with our homeless population at 9 o'clock. Then I plan on going down to the COVID Center after that to help with some of the paperwork, with some of the clients, trying to get them on the road to housing and, and jobs such. On the 9th, I have a telephone call with the new Public Affairs Representative from PG&E. And then on the 9th, that evening, I will be calling in, our California Insurance Commissioner will be having a telephone call at 5:00 PM. And then on Monday, I have a Hope Rising meeting at 8:30 in the morning, and then a COVID, COVID Center meeting at 10:00 AM, and then a Camp Canockdye planning meeting at 3:00 PM. Bruno, if you could send me the Project Room Key meetings, I'm not, I guess I'm, I'm not on that link anymore. If you could send those to me and I'll try to see if I can't fit those into my calendar. Thank you.
Will do.
Thank you Supervisor Scott. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, so tomorrow at 10, I'll have the Blue Collar Committee meeting on Zoom. And then Thursday, I will have the same meeting that Bruno was talking about with McGuire's representative and Huffman's representative, I think Cal Trout. I think it's regarding the Potter Valley Project. And then we will have the Workforce Alliance in North Bay. I'm not sure if we're having that yet. I know they put out a notice for a possible special meeting Thursday. That's potentially happening then. Friday, I'll be catching up on some constituent calls, things of those nature. On Monday, COVID recovery at 12 noon, and then a CAO meeting at 3:00 PM. And then back here next Tuesday.
Thank you Supervisor Crandall. Board Agenda Review after today's meeting. Tomorrow, like you said Bruno, the LTAAPC was canceled. I do have, I think at 3:15, the reclass, CCR, the class and comp reclassification meeting tomorrow at 3:15. On Thursday, have the, on the 9th, have the math meeting, but I will pay attention to those emails that are coming through for the Workforce Alliance in North Bay. And then on Friday, start with the EOC call in the morning, and then back here on Monday for the EOC meeting in the morning, and then also the reopening meeting at 12 o'clock in the afternoon, and then back here on the 14th. Just want to thank everybody for today. I want to thank everybody who stuck with us throughout the meeting here. I know we had some communication issues in the beginning, but we'll constantly be working on those. So I want to thank everyone. But that concludes our meeting for today. We'll go ahead and adjourn the July 7, 2020 Board Supervisor meeting.